Well, I know we have kind of a long meeting and so on. I think we'll do is go ahead and get it started. And hopefully somebody was able to text Supervisor Fowler. And hopefully she'll be joining us here shortly. So she might, I know we had some lingering electrical interruptions here because of the storm yesterday. So, well, good morning. It's August 1. Hard to believe this summer is, as always, it seems, is whizzing by. And today is Tuesday, August 1, 2023. And this is our regular meeting, as you may have noticed. So we do not undertake regular meetings in the month of July, although you will hear probably at Round Table. Our board still remains, as does our staff, very busy serving Coconial County. Our first order of business today is roll call. And I will start. My name is Patrice Horstman. And I am the Chair of the Board and the Supervisor for District 1, District 2.
Good morning, everybody. Heronimo Vasquez, Supervisor District 2 and current Vice Chair.
And District 3. District 3 is on, I'm sorry, is Matt Ryan. And Matt is on vacation and will not be able to join us here today. So we wish Hannah's family a great vacation. I think they're still in Alaska, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm sure they're having a great time. District 4.
Good morning, everyone. Good day. And we're going to have a nice board meeting. Judy Begay, District 4, County Board Supervisor, represent, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And District 5, we're waiting for Supervisor Fowler. Hopefully she'll join us here in just a few minutes. So moving on. Pardon me? Oh, there she is. Supervisor Fowler, District 5.
Good morning. I am in District 5.
All right. So our second order of business is to honor our nation through the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to ask those that can, please stand, and let's all together say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And members of the public, now is the time for the call to the public and for us to hear from you for any comments, questions, or concerns that you'd like to raise on matters that are not included on the agenda. Now is the time for you to be heard. We ask that, of course, that you remain respectful, since this is an open board meeting, and that you keep your comments to three minutes. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to the Clerk of the Board and Lindsay Daly, and she will explain how you can join us for the call to the public. Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. At this time, if anyone would like to make a comment, they can hit the raise hand icon that will appear at the bottom of their screen. If they hover towards the bottom, it looks like a hand. You click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
All right, members of the public, please, we'd love to hear from you.
And at this time, we have no hands raised.
All right, second call, members of the public. Again, now is the time for call to the public. Lindsay has explained how you can join us via your telephone or on your computers. So please, if you'd like to have comments, questions, now is your time.
And there are no hands raised, Chair Horstman.
All right. So with that, we're going to move forward, and we're going on with our agenda items. And for board meeting, for board members, we all know, but for members of the public, just to let you know, this is obviously the meeting of contracts. And we've received, in our board packet, we've received two, and they must be close to six-inch thick of contracts. So it has been a big, long week of reading and, and, and good work that's going on here in Coconial County. So we have a number of items on consent agendas, because many of these contracts are continuations and, and ongoing IGAs. But members of the board and members of the public, our consent agendas are decided through one vote and one motion and one vote, and there are no discussions. So if we would like to have discussions or items removed, now is the time to remove them. They will then go through an individual motion, individual vote, and will allow for discussion. And I'm going to open it to the board. I am going to indicate some I would like to see removed. And then, members of the board, if you have some additional items, then I'd like to hear from you, too. I would like to separate from the consent agenda for individual discussion items 5, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 16. And everybody may think, well, that's a lot, and it is. But we have actually 43 items on our consent agenda this morning. So any other items that members of the board would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the community initiative funding agreements with the Flagstaff Shelter Services in the total amount of ten thousand dollars broken down as set forth in our agenda. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Vice Chair, do I have a second? Uh, second by Supervisor Bagay. All those in favor of approving the initial, a community initiative funding agreement with Flag Shelter Services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. It is unanimous and thanks again, Ross. So, we're moving on. Item number, uh, on number six that we removed from the consent agenda. Consideration impossible action to approve a recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Controls Regarding an Application for a Permanent Extension of Premise for an Existing Liquor License Application for Junipine Cafe Located at eight three five one North State Route eighty nine A in Sedona. And the agent is Jody Harwood. And I'm going to turn this over to the clerk of the board. She can give us some background on this. We of course have some information also in our packets. And also she can explain why this isn't set as a hearing, uh, and, uh, why this is just a simple motion of the board. So, uh, please, Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. Yes, this is a different one than what we're used to seeing. This is actually um, a liquor license already exists at this location. And again, it's for the Junipine Cafe located at eight three five one North Highway eighty nine in Sedona, which is Supervisor District Three. Um, they are looking to extend the premise for their liquor license at their location to include their outside patio. So it would allow them, and, and they're asking for a permanent extension, not just a temporary one for an event. So if it was done temporarily, it would go through our office administratively, but because it's for a permanent extension of the premise, that is why it's coming before the board. Um, it does not require a public hearing or a posting at the location. Um, because a liquor license already exists there. So it's just strictly needs a recommendation from our board. And the board can decide to do either a recommendation, um, for, uh, in support of the extension. Um, and no recommendation or offer, uh, not to recommend extension of premise for the existing liquor license. Again, the state is the one that issues the license and the extension. The board is just offering a recommendation regarding it. And we did provide the application for the extension to our departments, which include risk management, health, community development, and the sheriff's office. None of them have concerns regarding the application. We also did reach out to Supervisor Ryan and let, made him aware of this, and he also did not have concerns regarding the application. Thank you. And I will say the agent is um, Judy Harwood. Judy is not present here in the meeting, uh, but she is the agent for the application as well.
Thanks, Lindsay. Appreciate that. Supervisor Bagay, any questions on that?
Uh, no, I don't. I see the difference now. So, thank you. And I was, I had a little question on permanent uh, recommendation. You know, I think, um, um, I guess, you know, that, that's been explained. So I'll just.
Thank you. Well, with that, is there a motion uh, to approve the recommendation of approval of the Arizona, to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding an application for a permanent extension of premise for an existing liquor license application for Junipine Cafe, as more fully set forth in our agenda? Uh, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Supervisor Fowler, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Bagay. All those in favor to approve the recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So we are going to move on and good luck, of course, to, uh, Junipine Cafe. Um, number seven. Consideration impossible action to ratify and approve a fiscal year twenty twenty four crime victim compensation grant, B C dash two four dash zero zero three with the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, the amount of two hundred and two thousand fifty seven dollars in a corresponding, corresponding budget amendment and fiscal year twenty twenty four independent contractor agreement with victim witnesses services for Coconino County to administer the crime victim compensation program for the Coconino County's Attorney's Office. And I has, asked to have this separated because this is a wonderful, um, award um, uh, that has been made, uh, to Coconino County uh, to assist with victim witnesses services. And so I thought it would be good for the board and for the community to get a little background on this wonderful, uh, grant that's been awarded. Uh, and, uh, County Manager, do we have, uh, someone with us that's going to give us a brief overview?
Yes, Janice Bradley, uh, from the County Attorney's Office is with us today to go with that item. Thank you, Janice.
Thank, thanks, Janice. Good to see you with us this morning.
Yes, good morning, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, thank you for this opportunity to share about this, um, program, the victim compensation program and our relationship with Victim Witness Services, um, of Coconino County. Um, I just also wanted to mention that we do have Marcus Clayton here from the Victim Witness Services, just in case, you know, he wants to share, um, a little bit about their services in detail. But, um, Victim Witness Services was established over thirty five years ago. Um, and their services um, provide services to victims, um, of crimes that happen within Coconino County. And they provide, um, statutory mandated services, um, because in nineteen, about nineteen ninety one, that's when it became, um, uh, required through legislation that, um, we provide these services. So they've continued these services over the years. And, um, they have been, um, within probably the last ten fifteen years, they have, um, reviewed their services to see if maybe we can try to put them under Coconino County. Or, you know, that maybe the City of Flagstaff, because they serve both of, both, um, organizations here in Coconino County. But it was found that, um, their services, if we did put it under Coconino County, it would cost us probably maybe eight, six to eight times more than what they're, um, operating, um, as a nonprofit organization at this point. So, um, we've been, um, providing, applying for some of these grants for them under, um, A C J C. And, um, the reason why it's set up this way is because, um, A C J C has an administrative code um, set up to where if there's two organizations, a nonprofit and a governmental agency, um, they would prefer that the governmental agency apply for the grant. So we're set up as the designated operational unit for Victim Witness Services for this grant, um, but Victim Witness Services has the, um, victim wit, uh, victim witness compensation board, which makes the decisions, you know, to pay out some of these, um, uh, um, compensations to victims. And, you know, they provide all types of services, um, from funeral, covering few funeral expenses, medical expenses, um, to, uh, wages, lost wages, you know, when the victim has to attend, uh, a court hearing or, you know, other, other, um, services. Um, but, um, that's kind of the, the relationship that Coconino County um, Attorney's Office has with Victim Witness Services and why we're set up this way. So we have to, we apply for the grant and then we, um, contract with Victim Witness Services to provide the services for Coconino County.
Thank you, Janice, and congratulations on getting the grant. I mean, that, that's what, uh, I thought was really, wanted to underscore. That was great and a great, uh, opportunity to continue to help victims of crime here within our community. And we certainly all appreciate the great work of the victim witnesses. So, uh, and Marcus, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, thank you, Board. Um, no, Janice actually, uh, said it all. You know, Victim Witness Services is very passionate about, uh, the victim compensation program and honestly serving, uh, the community of, uh, Coconino County. So thank you very much for the consideration.
All right, very good. And members of the board, any other questions or, or, uh, comments? And then I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Su- uh, Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, I just want to appreciate the, uh, the program. We've had it in our county for some time. We have it in page, uh, as well. Uh, and the services throughout the Coconino County. So I just really want to appreciate the the, the continued, um, partnerships that we have, uh, and in protecting our our residents, um, that end up in si- unfortunate situations. Thank you.
Yes, any other comments, members of the board, or?
Yeah.
Yes, Supervisor Vasquez.
No, I just wanted to put a shout out to, to the team at Victim Witness Services and the programs that they're doing and and the grants that they're providing, because these services are so crucial for some of, again, our most vulnerable population and they're, they're so needed. And so, uh, it's just, it's, but it's hard work. And so I just wanted to put that shout out to this group because, you know, it's hard work to do what you do and work through those systems. And you do so for, for people that are in some of the hardest times of their lives. So, uh, thank you for your work. It's appreciated.
Supervisor Bagay.
Yes, um, thank you so much for all the work that you guys do for the, the people that are out there that are needing these services and um, expansion and stuff like that is probably in the works. And, you know, I think, you know, it's going to take more people to really address, you know, more more, uh, needs, you know, out there. So I greatly appreciate all the, the, the whole department, you know, all the services that you're providing, plus the people that are helping you, even as far as, you know, making that, um, our, our operation also. Thank you so much.
All right. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four crime victim compensation grant with the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of two hundred and two thousand fifty seven dollars and corresponding budget, uh, ju- uh, budget amendment and fiscal year twenty twenty four independent contractor agreement with Victim Witness Services for Coconino County to administer the crime victim compensation program for the Coconino County Attorney's Office, as also more, uh, fully set forth in the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Bagay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. So thank you so much. And, uh, Janice, thank you for joining us this morning. And, and, uh, Marcus, again, thank you for being, uh, all you do here for Coconino County. Really appreciate your help.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on, members of the board. And number nine is consideration impossible action to appoint Rose Tohe to the Planning and Zoning Commission from District Four for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. And so happy to see we're making recommendations and appointing, um, uh, commissioners, planning and zoning, such an important commission for Coconino County. Um, and Rose Tohe is no stranger to any of us. She seems to be the little ever ready, ever ready, uh, bunny who always is there in our community to help, um. And she is being, uh, requested for an appointment from District Four. Is Rose with us?
No, Chair Horseman, she is not on.
Then I'm going to turn this over to District Four Supervisor. Uh, and if she'd like to say a few words, and then we'll entertain a motion.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to elaborate a little bit on this year, either particular item, but I think, um, as you say, you know, she's been in the community for a long, long time, and she's also, um, serving on various boards and commissions and uh, she's always there to help and willing to help and, um, always being, uh, involved with the communities in the area. And so, and, um, so I just want to say, uh, I had a chance to talk to her and I, um, wanted to make this recommendation, uh, considers, consideration for possible action to approve her to, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, uh, for, for District Four. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagay. Uh, any other comments before we move on to a motion? Supervisor Fowler.
Well, I'm very happy, like all, uh, everyone else. She's, she has the time, uh, to be able to, um, to serve on all these committees. And so I'm just real happy that she's joined the county, uh, commission. Thank you.
With that, I'd entertain a motion, uh, Supervisor Bagay. Uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say we're really lucky to have Rose and really excited to have her perspective on the planning and zoning. She's going to contribute a lot and, uh, it, and I look forward to, uh, working with her moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This time I will entertain a motion. Supervisor Bagay, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Rose Tohe to the Planning and Zoning Commission for District Four for the, for a term to expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor, appointing Rose Tohe to Planning and Zoning, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. And I know she's not on, but just please, Supervisor Bagay, please extend all of our great thanks to Rose Tohe from the board.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on. Number ten, consideration impossible action to approve the appointment of Roxana Contreras Cardillo to serve on the Coconino County Hispanic Advisory Council from District Four with a term of service ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And I do understand, I see, uh, Roxana, you're with us, and I hope I didn't mispronounce your last name, but if I did, please correct me.
You did it perfectly. Thank you so much.
Good. And would you like to make some comments? It's great to have you, uh, with us here this morning.
Absolutely. Um, it will be an absolute privilege to be part of this, um, Coconino Hispanic Advisory Council. It's something that I've been thinking about for a very long time. Uh, I certainly deeply care about all issues of our Hispanic community. And, you know, have worked, um, to the extent that I'm able to, to do a lot of that within the facts of community. So to be able to then look at the greater county is something that I look forward to enormously.
Thank you. And thanks to your willingness to step up. And I'll turn this over to Supervisor Bagay, since this is a recommendation from her district.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, again, this is another individual that I, I think can do the job and is willing to do the job and, um, very, um, uh, uh, you know, she's very, she's good in what she does and all the work that she's done. And we had a chance to sit down with her and talk with her, and I was really impressed with her. And, um, I think she can, uh, take care of this position and, you know, run with it and help in this capacity. So I'm so thankful to, um, um, Ro- Roxan, you know, Roxana, to, um, to, um, come forth and say, you know, um, she will do the job if she's recommended, and that's what we're doing now. So thank you so much. And she's with this community. She's worked in various organizations and you know, that, that led her to this position. So it's like getting ready for it. So thank you so much, Roxana.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagay. Other comments before we entertain a motion, Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I just want to say thank you for, uh, Roxana for stepping up and joining. Chalk is really lucky to have her join. She brings a wealth of experience. We worked together, uh, on various projects at Caleb Elementary School and also at North Country for the last thirteen years. And so I really appreciate her stepping up and coming and just want to put that shout out and look forward to seeing the work that she contributes to for Chalk and the county and, and as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments? Well, Supervisor Bagay, this time then, I would entertain a motion from you. And Supervisor, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Roxana Contreras Cardillo to serve on the Coconino County Hispanic Advisory Council from District Four, uh, with a term of service ending, um, December thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chair has seconded that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. And Roxana, thank you so much for stepping up and serving. Really appreciate it. All right, members of the board, we are moving on. Number eleven is consideration impossible action to approve Bruce, um, Sabzak, newly elected Chair Gail Jackson as the Vice Chair and Armando Ben- Ben Mosconi as the Secretary of the Local Workforce Development Board for a tur- two-year term with a term date that expires August first, twenty twenty five. Now turn this over to the County Manager, and I do see that we do have, um, uh, some folks with us this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have with us, uh, Br- Bruce Obzak and Gail Jackson, who graciously agreed to join the board, uh, and I also got on deck Billy Francis. And I would ask Billy Francis if he could just make a couple of comments related to the Workforce Development Board, and then I'll turn it over to, to Bruce and to Gail to make short comments regarding their willingness to serve on the Pavilion, Pavilion Board. So, Billy?
Uh, thank you so much, Madam Chair and, and County Manager Peru. Um, the local, the Coconino County Local Workforce Development Board um, is have programs in our local community that uh, can help individuals find jobs, improve their skills, and to help some individuals in our community, uh, start businesses. Um, where we have programs in our community that does job training and placement services for individuals that are looking for work. We help individuals with adult education and literacy programs. Uh, we, we help with apprenticeship programs and things of that nature. We're here to help the community get skilled so that they can get the skill set to be self-sufficient in their community, but we also help our employers with programs and funding to help them to upskill their current workforce as well as, uh, provide opportunities for individuals that are coming in to entree of opportunities. We're very excited about Bruce and Gail joining our Local Workforce Development Board. The experience that Bruce brings by serving on a local workforce development board before his capacity with serving with us will be an asset to the direction that we're going with the Local Workforce Development Board. Having Gail's experience as an economic development and what she brings to our community will only serve as an asset to making the community more aware of what, uh, W I O A, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, that federal program has been doing, not only in Coconino County, but in all communities for over the last decade. But just to make people aware of those services and what we can do for, for them in our community will only help us to better serve Coconino County and better serve the initiatives that the Board of Supervisor has for our communities. So thank you so much, uh, County Manager Peru. I'll turn it back over to you.
And I would turn it over, Madam Chair, with your permission, to Bruce Obzak and also Gail Jackson. Armando Bernas County is traveling today, so he's not able to be with us. And so Bruce and Gail can make some short comments and we'll proceed. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you all. I'm very honored to, to be, um, with this opportunity. And, um, like Billy said, you know, I, I've got prior experience in Southern California, Virginia, and now here. Um, I crossed over into workforce develop, economic development out of necessity. I was operations managers and that, so I felt that pain. And, um, what I really see our role is, is connecting industry, um, academia and government entities together. Uh, they can be uh, very different languages and very different operation, but, uh, I see us as facilitating collaboration and, uh, helping out our businesses to thrive and the citizens to be prosperous, uh, from that. So thank you all. I'm very honored.
Thank you very much, Bruce. And Gail? Hey, Gail, good morning.
Good morning. It's a pleasure being here. Thank you so much. Um, I'm excited to, uh, and honored to have been elected to the Vice Chair position, um, similar to what Bruce mentioned. Um, we have, we have work to do in Coconino County. There's money available. And, uh, we need to get our businesses, uh, more aware of this program and, um, simplify that process on how they can access it and, um, get them connected to those workers. So, um, that is what's drive, what drove me to, to get on this board and, um, I'm excited for the next two years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for agreeing to take leadership of positions here on the Workforce Development Board. So important for Coconino County. So thank you. Um, before I entertain a motion, any other comments from members of the board?
Look forward to working with them.
Very good. Thanks, thanks, Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you, thank you for joining the board. It's very important. It's, uh, we've been learning a lot about the Workforce Development Board, thanks to Billy really introducing us and, um, uh, bringing the, uh, workforce development, um, just work sessions online and taking us to, oh, my camera's not on. Hello.
We heard you loud and clear though.
I'm still having my coffee here. So I just want to appreciate you because I've, I'm learning that workforce development can do so much for an individual and, um, the community and even in the workforce development and just the opportunities that could be, uh, provided. And the creativity, that is what's needed, is what, uh, the creative programs that could be developed and implemented. Um, so I just want to thank you, uh, for joining and, um, uh, really thankful, really thankful that Billy's been educating us about, um, workforce development. It's always been here, but it's kind of, I've worked with them, um, all these years in various, uh, ways with all the different projects we've, we've worked on. Really appreciate that. But, um, Billy's brought in a different, um, a different view of workforce development for me. So thank you so much. Really appreciate you all joining.
All right. Thank you so much. And Supervisor Bagay?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, I also want to express my, uh, gratitude to Bruce and Armando and Gail, you know, stepping up and wanting to be on the board. And certainly you will have good guidance by Mr. Francis, uh, uh, in that department and and it is important that, you know, we, we work with the people that are in need and trying to get them, give them a little, uh, push into a direction where, you know, they will be able to function as, um, you know, while finding work and all other, um, for services that are being provided by workforce. So I greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right. And, uh, Billy, with, uh, board members like this, you, you, you're going to be able to move it forward. So thank you. Um, uh, members of the board, I would entertain a motion, uh, at this time. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Uh, um, oh, Supervisor Bagay, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. And, and, uh, I think, uh, passed unanimously. And Bruce and Gail, thank you so much for your service. And, and Billy, go get them. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, honored.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to number sixteen. And I think this is the last one we removed from the consent agenda. And, uh, this is consideration impossible action to approve a fiscal year twenty twenty four funding agreement, number eighty, I'm sorry, number eight hundred dash twenty three between the Arizona Department of Housing and Coconino County Health and Human Services to provide hotel vouchers to serve unsheltered persons experiencing homelessness and to ratify of the contract to July one, twenty twenty three with a budget adjustment of one hu- one hundred thirty-three thousand forty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Uh, this is a, uh, I asked for this to remove because this is a great news for Coconino County on the homeless service award hotel vouchers. And I thought it'd be important just to highlight this program and the funding that's been made available. And, uh, uh, County Manager, do we have, it looks like Michelle is with us.
Yeah, Michelle Axel is with us also, about your vouchers, but, uh, go to Michelle first.
All right, and Eve, hi both. Good to see both of you this morning. So hi, Michelle. Please take it away. Let us know about this program.
Thank you, Chair Horseman, and good morning, everyone. Um, we're super excited. The Arizona Department of Housing, um, issued a very quick turnaround. Um, the City of Flagstaff and the Coconino County were award, um, recipients of this. We will be able to work in partnership on this. Um, so the grant is for one year. Our goal is to house approximately a hundred and twenty individuals that fall within three priority areas. Um, the first priority is to focus on individuals who were displaced due to the closure of approximately two hundred sober living facilities down in the Phoenix area. The second priority area is to work with those that are incarcerated and need placement shortly until they can get into long-term housing. Um, we can work with our nonprofit individuals as well to help supplement their costs related to this or place them ourselves. So kind of a great program. And the third area is to focus on individuals that find themselves in our area stranded that may not be residents of our country. And so we're able to help house them while we work on resources and getting them to closer to family. So very excited, one-year program, um, to, again, to house approximately a hundred and twenty individuals within our county. So no boundaries, no borders. They are so very exciting.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Eve, anything else you'd like to add?
I think Michelle covered it well. Thank you. We're just excited to have this opportunity.
I, uh, agree. I'm disappointed to hear part of this is because of closure of sober living facilities in the Phoenix area. That, that doesn't make us, uh, helpful. I mean, there, there's never enough, right? And there's certainly not enough, uh, transitional housing and so it's always disappointing when you hear that there is a closure of some facilities. So but I'm glad we can help. And Michelle and Eve, thank you so much for your overview. Comments from members of the board, and then I'll entertain a motion. All right, I will then at this time entertain a motion to approve a fiscal year 2024 funding agreement number eight hundred dash twenty-three between Arizona Department of Housing and Coconino County Health and Human Services to provide hotel vouchers to serve unsheltered persons experiencing homelessness and to ratify the contract to July one, 2023 with a budget of adjustment of one hundred and thirty-three thousand forty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents first fiscal year 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. Michelle and Eve, thank you so much for being with us this morning and and good luck on this program. It's really important for us. Okay, and members of the board, believe it or not, we're ahead of schedule and we've just gone through forty-three items, mostly contracts. And and I think it's important to really take a look and hopefully people will take a look at the agenda because many of these contracts were continuations of social service programs that are offered throughout Coconino County and really benefit our community. So you know, for those may want to take a look at our agenda items and, you know, really this is you know, serving our community and serving, being part of a social safety net is such an important part of Coconino County. So I want to thank the County Manager and all of our departments who reach out for our nonprofits with our nonprofits to serve this population.
Madam Chair, if I could add a comment?
Yes, Supervisor, County Manager.
Just to appreciate all of our departments that review items before they come to the board, to the County Attorney's Office, Risk Management, IT, HR, and I say this because July and August are are the heaviest months. June, actually, June and August are the heaviest months for all of our contract work, just given the beginning and the end of the fiscal year. And there's a lot of work that goes into reviewing and, you know, this took, you know, two binders of contracts and all that, but I just wanted to do an appreciation to all the reviewing departments, County Attorney, Clerk's Office, everybody that does it. And there's a lot that goes into it. So thank you so much. And yes, we are kind of over the hump. Now we can hopefully get into some routine loads in terms of size of the agendas, but thanks so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'm really looking forward to signing all those contracts too. Actually, I am, but it's going to take a long time. All right, members of the board, we are moving on and we do have more consent agenda items and more contracts. But first, we must resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor resolving as the Flood Control District Board of Directors signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. We are now the Flood Control District Board of Directors and not unusual, but we have our Deputy County Manager who has popped up. And members of the board, members of the public, this is a consent agenda item. These again are more administrative in nature. We however can remove these items so that we can individually discuss them and they take an individual vote on these. Given the importance of these items, forty-four and forty-five, I'm going to request that we remove these items both from our consent agenda and that we receive information on these from our Deputy County Manager. Item number four, and I know these are somewhat related. Item number four is consideration of possible action to approve amendment number nine to the CMAR Contract 2023 dash one zero six, the Schultz Pipeline Flood Mitigation On Forest Watershed Restoration Project. And Amendment nine provides for Phase One Construction Services on the Copeland Watershed. That's four twenty road and the alluvial fan project for a grand for a total guaranteed maximum price of five million nine hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. The cost, which is to be reimbursed through the U.S. Forest Service Good Neighbor Agreement Number twenty-three dash GN dash one one zero three zero four zero zero dash zero nine six. Importantly, there is no district match. And with this, and because of the importance of this, I'm turning this over to Deputy County Manager and Flood Control District Director Lucinda Andrian.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Great to see you this morning. Pleased to bring forward, as you noted, two additional projects as we're moving forward out in the Schultz Pipeline flood area. Today, item forty-four is for a project in the Copeland Watershed. This specific project is actually part of the overall agreement that we have with the Forest Service to fund both our measures and work that needs to be performed on behalf of the Forest Services. Many people are aware their roads and other assets that they have up in that area were impacted by the fire and flooding. And part of this agreement is to provide that service to them as well, which is great. It's been a tremendous partnership. We're able to accomplish the sediment reduction projects that we need and they're able to work with us to accomplish road repairs, reestablishing stock tanks, other types of things that they need to accomplish as well. It's a great partnership. Very successful. This particular on forty-four is in the Copeland Watershed. That area has been very heavily damaged by the fire and flooding. And this is a work that will be above the four twenty road and work at the four twenty road. The drainage in that area crosses at several locations. That's why the the cost is relatively high for that area. And I want to note, for those that live in that corridor, we're making good progress. We're moving toward sixty percent engineering plans. The engineers will be out to discuss the engineering relative to measures within that Copeland area here over the next few weeks. So we're making good progress on that. Want to emphasize, though, that the work from the four twenty that road down to the neighborhood, that wrote, that work cannot take place until we've secured all the drainage easements for the conveyances through the neighborhood. Because, you know, we have to have somewhere for that water to go that's coming off the forest. And if we don't get those drainage easements, then we won't be able to complete other work on the forest. This work is further up. Again, it's in support of specific needs at the
Here we, we have, you're frozen, Lucinda.
And will hopefully be done this winter as soon as we get the drainage easements. And then the second item is for reconstructing a tank and some grazing, needing some grazing permit and roadwork needs for the Forest Service over in the the watershed above Wupaki Trails, the Lennox Watershed. So just wanted to add, we're really pleased this weekend. I think everybody's aware we had three inches of rainfall in an hour. And that truly tested the measures that have been constructed on and off in both the Brandis and Wupaki Trails areas and watersheds. Everything performed as designed actually overperformed. That was a hundred year flood a rainfall event, and we haven't seen rainfall to that extent in that area since 2018 when we had the thousand year rainfall event. And the measures performed actually had a little bit added capacity even. And and so we're all really thrilled. We did a debrief yesterday. And we're all very happy with that performance and the people in Wupaki Trails were out there on Sunday and they're very well aware. I'll send you an article or some good quotes about they're, they're very deeply appreciative of the district's support and the work that's been done. And they're very much recognized that if that if that was far worse than any event that occurred last year and that they would have it, we'd have a whole new disaster and devastation on our hands if if that work had not been done. So so anyway, really excited to report that and thank you for your support. Want to continue to thank our senators, Congressman O'Halloran for their support. None of this would have been possible without your support and their support for the funding. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will take each individual, our vote for each individual item, but thank you for covering both and just I know they probably want to have some other comments from board members, but just extend my great appreciation to the Flood Control District staff and team. And by team, I mean our our wonderful entities. I know Natural Channel Design and Tiffany Construction. You know, I've been such a big part of the Coconino County team and so pleased with the work that was able to get done in record time.
Record time.
The fact that we got this done before the monsoons really hit is a great testament to the partnership. Partnership with our federal partners who worked with us to get the funding necessary. And our our private partners who are there with boots on the ground to get the job done. And of course, the great Coconino County staff and really helped to protect our community and, you know, a hundred year event. It wasn't designed for a hundred year event, yet it did. So we certainly can't guarantee that when we have these big water rainfalls, there's no guarantee. But what we can say is that we have successfully assisted these communities with flood mitigation due to the wildfires that occurred last summer and and even you know, Schultz. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Really wonderful to see the great work working during this last weekend. So and Supervisor Begay, or I'm sorry Supervisor Vasquez and then Supervisor Begay. I know a lot of this was in your district, Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. It was really, it was really cool to see the newspaper article talk about how the mitigation had held and the only areas that actually had some kind of flooding were the non mitigated areas, including the Copeland Corridor. And so again, it just reiterates why it's so important that we get this work done because if we're able to do the work as our our team has proposed, it mitigates the floods to a degree. And this degree it held and not only held, but did better than expected. And so that's really encouraging and really exciting. And I really hope the the residents of the the other corridors that haven't gotten mitigation yet are are seeing this and realize that why it's so important that we get the easements in, that we get the ability to channel the water through the neighborhood safely. And so again, I just want to say thank you to all the partners, to the Flood Control District Team, Public Works, all the folks, Emergency Managements, all the folks that have been working on this over the last year to make it so that when we have events like we did the other day, it's not a, it's not a catastrophic event or it's not an event that's that's really damaging our 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 community as did last summer. So it's just really encouraging and I'm just really grateful and and it was really cool to to see that the mitigation held. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Begay, I know a lot of this is in your district as well. Any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to thank Lucinda and all your crew. You know, you work with a lot, a lot of people to address issues like this. And I'm really glad that, you know, we were able to do the flood mitigation. I think it really took some pressure off on, you know, the water that was flowing just yesterday, I believe it was, you know, and just a little bit water got on the road. I think it was right where Chevron is somewhere in that area. But other than that, it was all okay, you know. So and without that work that was done in the area, I think we we would have been faced with something else again. So I just want to say thank you so much for all the people that were involved and and I fully support, you know, the Flood Control District and, of course, the whole county because, you know, we're doing good for the community out there, for the people we serve. And we we're here to advocate for them and to help them push things along with the for them or whatever, you know. So that's what we're here for. So I just want to thank you and we fully support the staff there. Steve, your leadership and also, you know, others, Andy and also others that have Sue, thank you so much for all the efforts that you've done, you know, to 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 help the staff, you know, to get to where they need to get to. So and of course, my colleagues for supporting all these great initiatives that are coming in, all the work that's being done. And we, as a board, as a board, you know, we fully, fully greatly appreciate, you know, all the work that you, the staff are doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a great team and, you know, everybody just put a tremendous amount of effort to get this work done in a very short period of time and and that was recognized by the community and the comments that were made, how hard Tiffany worked to get it constructed. Civil tech engineering, natural channel design engineering, they all just work very, very long hours to get that work done. Now, hopefully, as Supervisor Vasquez mentioned, we can now take this similar type of benefit to the other corridors. And it will take that cooperation. So like we had in Wupaki and in Brandis. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And any other comments? Otherwise, at this point, Supervisor Fowler, please.
So Lucinda, is this, so what we have put in place now? I I drove through there just to see where the water, how it was flowing and well, had flown through. And it it did hold up. Now, is this project done now? And what else needs to be done in this area for any future events? I know we have some other corridors. These are the first ones that were to go. And then we have others to go to. What, where are we in the timeline and how much more do we have to do to be in and in this year and in the years to come to be able to say that we are done with this flood mitigation? And in in some sense, you know, I don't think will ever really be done, but at the same time, how, how, what is, where are we in this process right now?
And and before you answer that, just I would like to point out, we have to stay within the agenda. And I know that we do have a Flood Control District as a overview coming up at a future board meeting. So if you could just kind of briefly, Lucinda, respond, because I know we do need to stay within the agenda items.
We have completed the vast majority of all of the work in the Brandis and Wupaki Trails corridors. You have one project on the agenda today. That's a project in support of the Forest Service in above Wupaki Trails. You probably noted, there's still a fair amount of cleanup that they need to do and finalizing the work. But all the conveyances in Wupaki are done, the storm drain and the channel. It's all conveying as designed and actually exceeding design as shown this weekend. Now we're moving on. We also have completed all work in the South and North Paintbrush corridors as well as the vast, all the work in the neighborhood in Campbell. We upgraded the channel there. That performed again really well this weekend. Some additional work to do in Upper Campbell that that'll be coming through as a new GMP the end of this month. That's above the four twenty or a very similar type work we're doing in the Copeland area. And then, but we're really now focused on the next three corridors, Peaceful Way, Copeland and Government Tank. And engineering has been initiated on all those. It's at various stages. But things are progressing. We're working with the community to get the rights of entry so we can get the engineering and environmental surveys completed. We must have that to be able to move the engineering forward. We do in Copeland and moving that forward. And we're close in Peaceful and Government Tank. We've kind of just initiated that process, but we're working with the community there now, going door to door, letters, et cetera, to secure those rights of entry. So we're making good progress so far. Need to keep it up. There's a tremendous amount of work that has to get done before the next monsoon, monsoon twenty-four.
Yeah, well, thank you, Lucinda. Yeah, I I did see that everything held up. And so I think that, you know, it looks like the plan that was put in place to do Phase One, Phase Two, all of that. And this was the reason why maybe the community will now understand the reason those were those phases were put in place. So thank you. And yeah, so this is my district now with the redistricting that has taken place. So I'm gonna, you know, just really appreciate all the notices on the meetings. Really appreciate all the notices on the meetings, the um news releases or anything else that goes out, thank you.
And uh uh you know, I know that Supervisor Vasquez is still representing his district and, and I know that. He has been including Supervisor um Fowler, who soon will be representing that district as we move forward, so it is important to. All of us work together here, one county response, isn't that right, county manager? So. Uh and thank you so much again, um uh Lucinda for your and your team's great work and really, it, it has been a one county. Response uh for uh flood control, so uh I am now going to consider a motion. Consideration of possible action to approve the amendment number nine to the C M A R. The Schultz Pipeline Flood Mitigation on Forest Watershed Restoration Project. And Amendment Nine is more clearly set forth in our agenda, I'm not going to reread that. But I will ask for a motion to approve this action. Do I have a motion, Vice Chair?
So moved.
And do I have a second Supervisor Fowler? I have a motion and a second, all those to approve Amendment Number Nine. To the C M A R contract for the Schultz Pipeline Flood Mitigation on Forest Watershed Restoration Project. Please signify by saying aye, aye. It is unanimous, thank you very much, and we're going to move on to the next one, and that is number forty-five. Consideration of possible action to approve Amendment Ten to the C M A R twenty twenty-three dash one zero six. The Schultz Pipeline Flood Mitigation on Forest Watershed Restoration Project. Amendment Ten provides for phase three construction services on the Lennox Watershed, Lennox Tank, Tank Project. For a total guaranteed maximum price of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, I'm sorry, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And thirty-nine cents. The cost will be reimbursed again to the U S Forest Service. Good Neighbor Agreement Number Twenty-three dash G N dash one one zero three zero four zero zero dash zero nine six. Again, there is no district match and you did hear the information from our deputy. County Manager, Flood Control District Director, do I have any further comments or I'd entertain a motion, uh Vice Chair Vasquez?
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Vasquez, do I have a second? I have a second from Supervisor Fowler, all those in favor to approving Amendment Number Ten to the C M A R contract. For the Schultz Pipeline Flood Mitigation on Forest Watershed Restoration Project, as more fully set forth in the agenda. Please signify by saying aye, aye. It is unanimous, that is great and great job. Uh and as we move forward on this, and, and by the way, this is also really underscores the importance. Of the Good Neighbor Agreements and the Good Neighbor Authority, which again increases our partnerships with the Forest Service. And increases the capacity of the Forest Service to get the job done, uh and uh. I know we've heard about that from our Flood Control District Director, but we, we're seeing it in action with both of these contracts.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you.
All right, members of the board, we now need to resolve back. As the Board of Supervisors so that we can then resolve as the Health District Board of Directors, so do I have a motion to resolve back? As the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Uh Vice Chair makes the motion, do I have a second?
So move.
Second by Supervisor Begay, all those in favor of being the Board of Supervisors, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, very good, we're now the Board of Supervisors, but not for long. We need to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors, so I, do I have such a motion?
So move.
Uh Supervisor Begay made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, all those in favor of being the Health District Board of Directors, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Judy here, yeah. All right, it is unanimous, we're now the Health District Board of Directors, we have consent agenda items and we have. A few of them, this is item number forty-six to fifty-four, and this is members of the public. This again is a consent agenda, this can be handled through one motion and one vote. Uh these items are not held out individually for discussion, uh these are usually more ministerial or administrative in nature. So I'm going to ask my board members, do, does anyone want any of the agenda items removed? Or shall we consider a motion to accept the Public Health District Consent Agenda, members of the board?
I make a motion if um that we've got, accept the Public Health District Consent Agenda as pu- as read from items forty-six through. Uh fifty-four.
Very good, thank you, we have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Fowler, all those in favor of accepting the Public Health District Consent Agenda. Items forty-six to fifty-four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you so much, so we are moving on, members of the board, uh we now need to return. As the Board of Supervisors, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Vice uh Chair, a second by Supervisor Begay, all those in favor resolving as the Board of Supervisors signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Fowler, is that an aye from you? All right, well, we have uh three votes, so we are now the Board of Supervisors, so we're moving on to the Jail District Board of Directors. Do I have a motion to be the Jail District Board of Directors?
So move.
Of uh motion by Supervisor Fowler and a second by Vice Chair Vasquez. All those in favor of resolving as the Jail District Board of Directors signify by saying aye, aye. All right, we are now the Jail District Board of Directors, we have one item, it's set forth as a consent agenda item. And it's the approval of a request for qualifications. For twenty twenty-three dash one oh two independent contract to Kenny Construction Services Inc. And an associated budget adjustment to provide design services and pre-construction. Services resulting in a successfully executed. Coconino County Jail District Intake Remodel and Medical Unit Expansion Project. In the amount not to exceed two million nine hundred and eighteen dollars, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four, do I have a motion to accept this consent agenda item?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Begay, all those in favor to approve the R F Q uh for independent contractor to con. Kenny Construction Services, please indicate by uh saying aye, aye.
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 All right, it's unanimous, thank you all, and um we now need to move. Back and resolve as the Board of Supervisors, do I have that motion?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Begay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, all those in favor of again resolving as a Board of Supervisor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, do we? All right, it's unanimous, thank you so much. Uh and as the Board of Supervisors, we now have some discussion items. And the first one, number fifty-six, is discussion and update regarding state and our federal legislative and or administrative matters. And who pops up for that? But the team, the Government Affairs Team, so it's great to see both Gregory and Keith. Uh and of course Deputy County Manager Andy Bertelson, uh County Manager, do you have anything to say before we move forward with item fifty-six?
So Madam Chair, uh Gregory and Keith are ready to record that, so thank you.
Thank you County Manager Peru and Chair Horstman and Board Members, wonderful to be here. Uh with you today and provide an update, it's been a little bit of time since we've had an opportunity to do this um uh. Here in presentation format, so uh I'll start on the state side and then Keith will kick off on the federal side, so. Just a quick note that the CSA Summit uh planning is coming along. Uh that'll be held in Coconino County at the Drury and High Country Conference Center on October eleventh through the thirteenth. We have a great team with all hands on deck and we have, we've arranged for three pop cup pre-conference events, including a tour of Walnut Canyon. With both a walking component and a stay in the visitor's center option. Uh golf event at the Country Club, at Continental Country Club. Which will be free for the first twelve players with three different tee times. And a sustainable building tour in and around downtown Flagstaff. With lunch culminating at the Lumber Yard at twelve thirty for both. The Walnut Canyon Tour as well as the uh downtown uh Sustainable Building Tour. Um we've been working with Cindy Sokey, District Director for District One and Felice Weems. Uh County Manager's uh Assistant here as well as Jen Hammond. Um on a dinner which will be hosted at the Amphitheater at Fort Tud Hill. And we'll have heaters and two tents out there to provide protection in the early. October months, Will's Grill will be catering and Jen Hammond has done a wonderful job lining this up and making sure the menu. Uh is going to be accessible for everyone in attendance, so we've also hired a DJ there. And we've uh, we will be having a Northern Wonders Art Fair at the dinner with an art exhibition as well as the opportunity. For your colleagues around the state to buy uh and purchase that art, so. With that, we're currently at a cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh with a one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars uh directly paid for by the county at this time. And so we're developing a sponsorship solicitation plan in collaboration with Chris Pasters and so Keith. Uh Corey and I will be handling that from the local level to bring in some funds to help support this event. And of course, we're working in partnership with Penny Adams at CSA, so just wanted to provide a quick update on the CSA Summit Planning Activities. It's been all hands on deck here uh on the second floor and many people across your offices are engaged.
And before you move on, take breath for just a minute, and uh any questions or comments, members uh of the board, I know this is. Uh a big event, uh Coconino County is hosting uh the County Supervisors Association. Uh and so supervisors from all over state of Arizona will be here in Coconino County and it's our time to shine and um. It sounds like you're doing a wonderful job uh on getting a, a wonderful um uh organizing a wonderful program, so. Uh any uh comments, questions for members of the board on this event?
I just want to say, really pleased with the efforts of the team to, to organize this and looking forward to it um. When we were in Naco, people were really excited about, from Arizona, we're really excited about coming up for this and so. Uh I look forward to be able to uh to host our state with uh, you know, our other supervisors. With all the cool things that are going on at Coconino County, so thanks team for organizing.
And I'll throw it a, a challenge to my other supervisors, you want, you want to do a foursome, we can golf, we'll have, we'll have to notify it on, as an agenda item, but it would be fun. All right, all right, let's go forward.
Yeah, and just.
By the way, but that's okay.
Sure, I will not be on the golf course, um I will be at Walnut Canyon, but um. Just also as a note, and we'll be talking about this later this afternoon, but Keith and I are, are in full engagement across at the staff level on the. Policy development process, of course, on behalf of the county for the summit and, and those considerations that. Inform the summit in terms of our legislative advocacy program, but we'll be discussing that at another uh agenda item here shortly, so. Also wanted to give you an update, we've initiated an R F P process to uh find a state advocate who can represent the county. On the ground at the state Capitol, uh as you know, Todd Medexa uh resigned his position effective June thirtieth. We're very thankful for the long and dedicated service that Todd had uh here, uh advancing our, our. Efforts down at the state Capitol and keeping us apprised of many developments that occurred down there over the many years, so we've. We've initiated that R F P process and hope to have someone on the ground and. And working with us as we head into the legislative summit uh here with CSA in October.
But you know, it'd probably be a very nice thing to get out a letter of appreciation off to Todd Medeska for his. Uh years of service on behalf of Coconino County down there, so um. Something County Management, we may want to add uh to the list of things to do and. I think probably most of the board, all the board members would like to sign that, so.
Absolutely, we'll work on that and get that over to uh the board for signature, um and that would be wonderful, I know Todd would. Very much appreciate that, so we'll get that under, on our list, um. So yesterday, uh the legislature reconvened after a hiatus um going back into June. Um they had been on our, on a break since June, many had been collecting per diem and. Uh at two hundred and five days or four days, sorry, that was the longest legislate, slate legislative session we had known up until yesterday. And so uh early yesterday morning, uh the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. Put out a call to action as the legislature was considering the passage of Maricopa County's Proposition Four Hundred. Transportation Tax Renewal, which is a referral to the voters. In Maricopa County, this tax has to go through the legislature to be referred to the voters. And we were able to get all five board members signed in on the legislators. Uh request to speak and just thank you and thank your uh district directors for responding so quickly and mobilizing on, on that as we analyzed that legislation. Um the House passed the bill forty-three to fourteen with three not voting, so it's bipartisan and uh House Transportation Chair uh. Cook, who serves as our L D seven uh representative along with David Marshall, led the charge in the House against misinformation. On the bill and did a tremendous job explaining the importance of Proposition Four Hundred as it relates to rural Arizona. And the importance for that transportation tax in Maricopa County to continue. Later in the day, the Senate passed the bill nineteen to seven with four not voting, and so this was a compromise between majority leadership and the governor's office. To deliver on the Maricopa Association of Govern- Governments Members' commitment to create a long-term. Fully integrated transportation plan that benefits all Maricopa County residents and ensures the region's. Transit infrastructures built to support the region's rapid growth. And so within that book, bill, it said sales tax allocations at forty point five percent. For freeways, thirty-seven percent for transit, including three and a half percent for capital rehabilitation of the light rail. And twenty-two point five percent for arterials and uh programs under that, that's, that piece, it also included funding for street sweepers. Paving of unpaved roads, non-motorized infrastructure. And emerging technology and it allows the region to bring the plan to the voters. And it increased the sales tax allocation to transit from thirty-three and a half, thirty-three point three percent to thirty-seven percent. But it also uh stopped the extension of new light rail uh within the area, so that was part of the compromise as. Originally, when the majorities plan went down to the governor earlier in the session, they had gotten rid of transit. And transit's a key component for Maricopa County's ability to maintain their air quality standards. As a non-attainment on area under EPA's rules. Um so Governor Hobbs has anticipated to sign that bill, uh we'll be monitoring that, she has ten days now that the legislature. Has signed he died, they did that yesterday at five fifteen, right as the admin building lost power, so. The power went down, the legislature adjourned sign he die, putting a cap on a historic two hundred and four day long session. Um and Governor Hobbs also set a record, this session with a hundred and forty-three bills vetoed as of today. Uh we'll be monitoring um her, her continued work on some of the bills that the legislature sent up to her. Including a rumored negotiation on passing the Proposition Four Hundred referral to repeal. The residential rental tax for cities and towns, so we'll be monitoring that. The legislature did send that bill up to her again, and the final actions of the Senate, they took action to finally confirm with a full Senate. Vote, uh Jeffrey Glover as DPS Director. And so um that really puts the cap on the session, Government Affairs, our intern Sophia, Keith and I are working on an end of session report. With final dispositions and, and positions on bills that we monitored. Over the legislative session, we'll be providing that to the board for their review, so you can see the work that the team did. This, this year uh during this historically long legislative session, um just as a note. Uh Craig Sullivan will be here on September twelfth at four P M, we had to modify schedules. Due to some scheduling conflicts that emerged for next week on the eighth. Um and so Mr. Sullivan uh will be here on, on September twelfth to give his annual report and overview of the legislate, legislative session. On the transportation side, um just so you know, RTAC Rural Transportation Advocacy Council is soliciting. Uh proposals for transportation projects uh through the COGS and MPO. Through the COGS and MPOs across the state for FY twenty-five. For Greater Arizona Appropriations Bill. And so NACO did not allow new submissions into their regional priority projects list this, this year. So we will not, we would not be submitting anything through that. They did allow Metro Plan is soliciting projects, so that limits what we can put into the Metro Plan. FMPO boundary and in working with public works, they're not going to submit anything. Beyond the government take highway drainage improvement so as not to compete with this critical priority project.
Can I have you hold for just one moment? You. We want to make sure if anybody has any questions or whatever, and I really appreciate your trying to get us through this and expedite it, but. You had indicated Craig Sullivan is coming up. Is that right on the twelfth?
Yes, yes, that is correct. CSA does an annual report. To, to its member counties and Craig will be up here on the twelfth at four.
And because I see our board meeting starts at six, so I guess that's going to change.
Yes, we're working with Lindsay to work that in so that Craig can make a presentation as we, there's some scheduling conflicts that emerged next week.
Okay, that sounds great. Let's, that's for the board, just to give an FYI. And because I know all of us would really like to welcome Craig and look forward to seeing him here and getting his report. So, sorry, but I want to make sure we got that, so.
Absolutely, Chair Horstman and board members. And our intent would be to have Craig here, join you in person. As I understand, we'll be. Transitioning back into in-person meetings. And so that'll be really great opportunity to connect with Craig. In advance of the summit and kind of hear the legislative ecosystem from his perspective. And CSA's perspective as we head in to the next legislative session.
All right.
So finally, just to finish out the state update, just wanted to make everyone aware that while we were at the Naco Annual Conference. Earlier two weeks ago at this point, Vice Chair testified to the State Transportation Board on a three point seven million dollar. State match advantage for Rural Transportation Fund request. To match the protect grant that Metro Plan is spearheading in collaboration with the Flood Control District. To secure highway drainage improvement funding for US eighty-nine. And so Vice Chair Metro Plan Staff and Deputy County Manager Andreani all offered testimony. And the State Transportation Board responded by unanimously supporting the request. This is a tremendous effort by Vice Chair Vasquez. On behalf of the county to bring this local funding down to us as, as Metro Plan and the Flood Control District. Work on the protect grant. And then we also were able to secure support letters from both the Navajo Nation. And the government and the governor's office on the broader protect grant. I know Chair, you've also been working. With Grand Canyon National Park on.
We also received a support letter from Grand Canyon National Park and Superintendent Ed Kiebel there.
Yes, excellent. So just wanted to provide the board an update on that. I believe the intention is to submit Metro Plan to submit the grant here. In a couple of weeks by the mid-August deadline, but that really rounds out the state update and happy to answer any questions before. Turning it over to Keith, who will give you a federal update.
All right. And, and yes, I also want to underscore the importance of having Vice Chair Vasquez provide his. Testimony. Really appreciate all of his great efforts on the county's behalf on this. So. Thank you, Vice Chair, very much. Really appreciate your efforts. All right. Any comments or questions for, from Gregory?
Can I just say something?
Of course.
Thank you. So it was a great honor to be able to testify and it was very gratifying to finally get some funding. Towards the transportation piece of the flood mitigation efforts. Up until now, we've been very real successful with the on-force measures. And the money for the neighborhoods, but the area that was kind of taking, taking its time was the transportation piece. And so. This was one of those wins that was like finally some, some transportation funding. So it was really exciting. And I just want to say thank you to all the team that helped make that happen because. You know, I've, I've said it before and I'll say it again, like. You know, us and supervisors were able to do those testimonies and testify whatnot because of the great team that. That we have to back us up and prepare us. And so it was definitely a team effort and I just want to say thank you to everybody that was involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks.
Chairman, just to, just, I would be remiss if we didn't thank Governor Katie Hobbs, who was able to provide. A letter in support of the protect grant, which we were able to share with the State Transportation Board. Right at the last minute. And so we just want to thank Governor Hobbs for her support of this as well.
It's not, it's nice when the governor knows that there is a county outside of Maricopa. And we certainly appreciate all of her efforts here in northern Arizona. So thank you for that. And I know that the rest of the board feels the same. And, and just as a note, I, we have lost Supervisor Fowler from the board meeting and. Hopefully she can rejoin us this afternoon. So it's the three of us. We still have a quora, but so we're moving forward. Any other comments, questions that you might have for Gregory Nelson? All right, then we are on to hear from Keith. All right, Keith, you're up.
Good morning, everybody. Oh. Let's see if I can see where I'm in the screen here. Let's do it this way. So in terms of federal update, I'm probably going to break it into, I guess, four sort of short sections. I'll do an update on the National Association of Counties Conference first, and then I'll come back and talk about. The farm bill, wildland firefighter pay. And then congressionally directed spending. And after each of those four sections, I'll probably pause. So in case people do have questions or. Comments on any part of this, we can stop at that time. But. I'll start with Naco first, I guess, before talking about the annual conference in Austin. It's. Been a while since we last met, so I did want to mention we had a successful. Naco Fellowship visit of administrative and congressional staff that came out and visited Kokaino County. And all the board members are involved in that, so I don't have to go into. Great length of what we did there, but I do know that the staff of Naco as well as the congressional and. Presidential staff, they were super appreciative. We did get a chance to show various projects like the. Some flood control projects as well as the. Renewable energy projects on Baba Ranches and other things. So very successful visit there. Then last week, we were in Austin, Texas. It was blazing hot there as it is in much of the country this time of year. But we had a very successful, I think, visit to Austin, Texas. So. All three of our resolutions on the Public Land Steering Committee. Passed unanimously with Chair Horstman leading the charge there and being the person who brought those resolutions forward. They were on mitigating or working for the Colorado River drought. Getting more law enforcement on public lands. And there was a forest restoration and flood mitigation resolution and all those. Passed through the Public Land Steering Committee unanimously. Also, our board was successful in getting presidential appointments for the next year at Naco. So Chair Horstman is the new. New Vice Chair of the Outdoor Recreation Subcommittee on the Public Land Steering Committee, which is. Very exciting. That's a really important committee for Subcommittee for Gateway Communities. Out west and it's great to have leadership on that Subcommittee because really important issues with. Recreational use in some cases, overuse and how to manage that. And then Supervisor Lena Fowler was reappointed to the Naco Board of Directors, which. Gives our county a big voice on the board. There's only ten members of that. Group. And so it's great that the president of Naco saw fit to reappoint her. She's also the Vice Chair of the Rural Action Caucus. And a Vice Chair for the Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. So that's, that's my update on.
Just, and just one thing on the fellowship, Madam Chair and board members is. We are going to work with Stephen Pellegrini to produce a video highlighting that event and in order to tell the county's story. So we will be engaging board members for possible narration on, on a forthcoming video on the fellowship visit.
Sorry, Keith. Yeah, no problem. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the Naco stuff before I move on to other federal?
The only thing I would say is I know we're, we're also excited about working forward to getting Vice Chair Vasquez. On the Transportation Committee there within Naco. His leadership here in Kokaino County in that area. Has been really important and be good to get him on that. And then, you know, I'm so proud of Lena. You know, again, getting reelected for the National Board, but it's time for us to push her forward. For a leadership position within the Naco Board. We haven't been represented in rural, rural United States and quite frankly, in. Arizona and Kokaino County. So. We're, we're going to start her campaign. She's not on, so I can say this.
And Chair Horstman, just a note, we are working with CSA on the counties. The CSA handles the county memberships. On the Transportation Committee and so, so far we have not heard any resistance to that, but we will. Check in with Penny and make sure that that is progressing for Supervisor and Vice Chair Vasquez's appointment to that committee. As a member of the State of Arizona delegation.
That's great. And, and of course, you know, just being part of WIR and Public Lands and now for the new Naco Subcommittee. On for Gateway Communities and recreational communities. I'm very much looking forward to continuing efforts on behalf of. Kokaino County with that as well. So thanks.
Anything else on Naco? Saying none, I'll move forward here, I think. So. In terms of the federal stuff, one of the things we've been working on is, is to make sure that the farm bill meets some of our. Forestry needs. So we've been very engaged on that. We did have a meeting. Last week and I know Lucinda Ani and then our forester Jay Smith are very interested in making sure. That we continue good neighbor authority in the next farm bill, but also expand it so that. Counties have some of the same authorities that states do to. Retain, for example, if there's money or receipts from timber sales that that money could be used by the county to. Be used for other forest restoration or to sort of be a repurpose. The state already has that authority. We're trying to get the county where they can retain and repurpose. Wood product receipts for other forest restoration projects. Hopefully in the next farm bill, whenever that goes through, it does appear. That in the current Congress, there's already a push to do that. The Idaho delegation has sort of been leading on that. So that Senator Jim Risch. In Idaho is the lead sponsor on a Senate bill to that effect. And then. Russ Falter, who's a rep in the House from Idaho, is leading the House effort along with Marie Glus and Campares from Washington State. On the Senate bill, John Tuster is also involved. So it looks like the. Northern Rockies and Northwest states have sort of taken the lead on that, but. If we can get our senators engaged to either incorporate that in the. Fire bill or in the farm bill, either. Either in that form or in some different form, if there's something specific to that legislation that isn't. Perfectly written, but we're trying to extend that authority because it will allow the. County to continue to do the good work it's already been able to do under good neighbor authority and maybe even expand it. Any questions on that part or comments?
No, it's. It's, it's unfortunate that it's going to take some time to get this done, but certainly is important. And, and I know you've made some suggestions on it. So thank you.
And, and Chair, just board members, we have relayed those suggestions over to Bob and Anna. And so they'll be engaging the delegation to move those forward in addition to the farm bill recommendations that we had put forward. Back in March when the, our senators had reached out. So we'll be making sure we stay on top of that issue. To broaden that authority to give us more flexibility.
And then the next thing I was going to point out is we're working very hard as a county to support the federal delegation or our members who are trying to. Avoid an upcoming issue with wildland firefighter pay. So there was. There was something that passed with. With the legislation the last couple of years on the bipartisan. Infrastructure law and others to expand wildland firefighter pay. They were being paid very poorly prior to this and then. Their pay was increased and now, but that sun sets on October first if there isn't some kind of remedy. So. Senator Cinema is leading a bill to try to avoid that wildland firefighter. Fiscal pay cliff, which would be really severe. It would cut some of the. At the lower end of the pay scale, some of the firefighters would lose about half of what they're getting paid now and go back. To something ridiculous like nine dollars an hour, which, you know, for. Fighting wildland fires is not adequate pay. So. She has got a bill forward that's passed out of committee eleven to one with Senator Paul from Kentucky being the lone dissenting vote. But that bill would, would allow. The firefighters to get paid adequately and prevent that fiscal firefighter cliff. And it does have bipartisan support as supportive of the leadership. And Chair Horstman has already signed a letter and supported that legislation. There's another bill possibly in the Senate from Senator Bennett from Colorado that would be an even more comprehensive. Issue of dealing with wildland firefighters, including mental health. Parody and stuff, things that would help there, but initially at least the cinema bill has bipartisan support and they're trying to get it. Rush or try to get it through before the October first fiscal cliff and our county is supportive of those efforts. Any questions on that?
No, I think it's something that we here in Kokaino County that have experienced wildfires and the importance to have. Available, trained, competent and well-paid firefighters is important. And I certainly am. Pleased that Senator Cinema is taking the lead on this bipartisan bill and I know we'll be hearing more about that. Probably from her and others. So thanks on that.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, members of the board? All right. So please proceed, Keith.
Yep. And finally, on congressionally directed spending requests, I think the board is well aware. From previous conversations, that we're in a much different environment as far as. The receptivity to congressionally directed spending requests than we were in previous Congresses. The new house has been. More challenging in terms of getting requests through. So a smaller number have been accepted. Through the House and through Senate appropriations, but. So good news and bad news. I guess I'll start with the bad news. Senate Appropriations has made note that the emergency management requests that we put forth and the sheriff's search and rescue vehicle. Request were not, according to Senator Kelly's office, the Senate Appropriations. Committee has pulled those out or have not funded those. And so they've only funded about a third of the requests that came forward, which is significantly. Below previous years. And so that's, that's a real bummer. On the better news, I guess, is. The Interior and Environment Appropriations Bill. Did include congressional, congressionally directed funding request. For forest restoration projects. They didn't fund the full amount. We had requested. Around two point six million. They have funded two million of that. So about close to seventy, around seventy-five percent. Funding of that project. So. And it's the only project in the Interior and Environment Appropriations Bill, the only one in Arizona that got approved. So I think through our office's advocacy and through our lobbyist, Bob Holmes and Anna Ma. And through really diligent work by the staffs of Senator Kelly and Senator Cinema, they have worked really, really hard to get something. Across the finish line there. We've had to move the goalposts. Or, or the Senate Appropriations Committee has moved the goalposts several times. Saying this project is ineligible or this one isn't. And so Lucinda, Andreani and Jay Smith. Have been very, very flexible and nimble and rewriting requests until we could get something that they would accept. So within that two million, we're looking at potentially. Funding three projects. One of them is the government tanks. Watershed improvements. Another one is the Copeland Detention Basin. And then a third one is some forest restoration that we would. Work in conjunction with, with the City and Law Observatory to do some thinning there. And hopefully with that two million, we can do most of. What is asked for on those three projects, but one promising sign too on that front is. The Interior and Environment Appropriations Bill did already go before committee. That's the only appropriations bill so far that's been unanimous. In committee. So it did pass twenty-eight to nothing. So there's some hope there that. That maybe that line of funding, which includes the congressionally directed project, if that doesn't get stripped out. During reconciliation with the House. which includes the congressionally directed project, if that doesn't get stripped out during reconciliation with the House, that, that, that one will get across the finish line. But we still have a long ways to go and these appropriations bills may not go through till December, January. There'll probably be some continuing resolutions before they, you know, get an appropriation bill across. And the farm bill is probably even pushed further ahead. So we'll just see what happens there. But at least we should be, given the environment that we're in, we should be thankful that one of our requests is still getting consideration as we've been very successful after the last couple of years. And I'll pause. Go ahead.
Keith, just one thing to add there and for the board to understand is that, given the likelihood that the federal government will not see a budget by September 30th, that continuing resolutions will be effectuated through the rest of the year. We, we may not be, this, this could cause an issue because under the debt ceiling negotiation, there's a 1% cut automatic January 1st if they don't have a budget deal. So if they're still operating in continuing resolutions by January 1st, that then shrinks the discretionary spending automatically by 1%. So that'll, we'll have to monitor this as the federal government through Congress is working to get their appropriations bills forward. But that's just something to keep in mind that there is an automatic 1% trigger if no budget's passed by January 1st. And so that then could also have an impact here, but we'll keep you appraised of that.
And that's what I have. So I'll entertain any questions or comments. Otherwise, that's my federal update.
Any comments, questions, members of the board? Supervisor, again, sorry, anything?
I know I don't have any questions.
Very good. All right. I know we have some other items on here. It's 10 to 12. We haven't taken a break. We've been moving quite, moving along. Is there something we can save for this afternoon?
Sure. Madam Chair, we can, we can cover the rest of our roundtable at the end of today's meeting. Because we have the Auditor General right at 1 o'clock, I believe. So we can just come back and do a wrap on our, the challenge.
Yeah, that, that's at 1 o'clock and that's a, a time certain. So members of the board, I think then at this time we will break for our lunch break. It is important that we're back at 1 o'clock. Is that correct? 1 o'clock, not 1:15, but 1 o'clock.
Let me double check. Is it, Lindsay, is it 1:15? Okay.
It is 1:15. Okay. 1:15. We got 15 extra minutes. So 1:15, members of the board, to meet with the Auditor General on the Auditor General's report. So that's going to be important for us to be back in full force this afternoon. So thank you all and we will see you after lunch. Bye.
Hi Vice Chair, this is Gregory. Just reminder, the meeting starts at 1:15.
Oh, okay cool. That gives me a second to breathe for a second. Alright, thank you. I'll be there in a minute. Okay. Hey let's go. Let's go do what you need to do.
Okay.
Supervisor, you can go on the mute your computer. Thank you. So. We're good. No doubt. They said, do I? Said, well, firehouse politics are brutal, so. What? Doing what?
Somebody is not muted, I think. Is that Steve?
That's me, thank you.
Just a heads up.
All right, I did hear Huronimo on early and first one back and I don't know if everybody else but for the board members that are on if you wouldn't mind turning on your cameras so I see your back. There he is.
Hi Vice Chair, hi Chair, as Vice Chair.
I know who you are.
I heard Supervisor Baguette, but I didn't see her. Oh, there she is. She just popped up. So you have Coram now, Madam Chair.
Yeah, we have a few minutes, but I know the Auditor General, we don't want to keep the Auditor General waiting and. Get that phone. Yes. No. By the way, I accidentally made copies on this report highlights from the Auditor Generals. I made too many copies, so I dropped one off at Supervisor Baguette's office and Huronimo's office and. And I didn't think Matt or Lena were going to be here, so I didn't drop it off there, but hopefully you've got a copy of it. I didn't want to throw them away when they could be used. All right. Few more minutes. Has anybody heard from Lena?
I've not seen.
Madam Chair, she indicated earlier that she intended to be here for the afternoon meeting, but we haven't heard anything since then. I will check in.
And I see the Auditor General's office is with us. Hello, how are you?
Good. How are you, Madam Chair?
It's good to see you.
It's nice to see you guys, Chair.
So what's the weather? You're down in Phoenix, aren't you?
Yes, it's very, very hot.
Yeah, well, see, you should have come up. We could have done this in person, gotten you out of that heat.
Well, we, you know, we are always prepared to come up. Last we heard that you guys were still on Zoom.
We are.
So hopefully next year we'll be back where we can come meet in person.
That'd be great. We're in the process of remodeling our chambers downstairs, you know, in light of COVID, et cetera. There are some changes we needed to make and. It's looking pretty nice down there, so hopefully soon.
Great. Well, and I did have staff up in Coconino in the Flagstaff area.
That I heard, yeah.
And so we had some of the staff worked on the county and then some of them worked over. I actually have the NAU audit and Coconino College audit also on my audit schedule. And so most of my team came up to Flagstaff last week, got out of the heat. And then we heard that you guys were in a heat wave and we're like, that's amazing. Eighty, you know, in the eighties is great.
Yeah, we're all died. People from Phoenix were very happy. They thought it was great, so. All right, it's 1:15. And again, I don't want to take any more of your time because I know you're busy. And so what I'm going to go ahead and do is bring us back into session, back from our lunch break. And we do have items 57, 58, and 59, which we will hold and handle at the end of our agenda today, this afternoon. So we're now on item number 60. And we have, I see Supervisor Baguette, Supervisor Vasquez, and myself, Patrice Horstman. We are back. I do not see Lena on. Hopefully Supervisor Fowler will join us here momentarily. And number 60 is presentation and discussion regarding the Auditor General's Office Fiscal Year 2022 Financial Audit Results. And we do have a copy of the information that was presented and provided to us from the Auditor General's office and also from Siri Malaney, our Finance Director. And so I'm going to turn this to County Manager and have him do the introductions and we'll proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just read quickly paraphrase from the staff report. So Coconino County issued a comprehensive annual financial report for June 30, 2022. Included in this report are audit financial statements for the county as required by statutes. Under another statute, within 90 days after completing the audit, the Board of Supervisors shall ask the auditor who performed the audit to present the audit findings and the findings to the Board in a regular meeting, and that's what's occurring today. And so with that, I'm going to ask Siri to make any comments and we'll kick it over to Taryn. So thank you, Siri.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I do want to point out, it may feel like we just did this, and in some ways we sort of did. So the audit results we're presenting for this year are for fiscal year 2022. Back in December, we did a similar presentation for the fiscal year 2021 audit results. So I just wanted to point out, in terms of being able to get more up to date with our audit issuance after the close of our fiscal year, our fiscal year does close June 30. And the reports that we're presenting today are the financial statement audit that's dated April 28, and then our single audit dated May 31. And so this is five to six months ahead of the fiscal year 21 audit release dates. And I just wanted to point that out because we have had turnover again in our, you know, our financial reporting division at the county over the past few years, but under the leadership of Abby Velazquez, her team Dominic Iglesias, John Comer, Adina Dinaz, our newest addition Jessica Hudson, and then assistants as well from Melanie Askew, our compliance person. They've really done a lot of work along with Auditor General and in partnership with Taryn and her team, who've also been really great in helping us get more up to date and more timely on these reports and our audit issuance. And we intend to not lose that momentum and keep moving forward in future subsequent fiscal years. So I just wanted to point that out and recognize Abby's team and all of the hard work that's gone into making that progress. So with that, I will turn it over to Taryn. Thank you.
Thank you again, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, County Manager Peru. Again, I am Taryn Stangle. I am the Financial Audit Manager. Along with me today online is Travis Alexander. He was the Lead Audit Senior for the Fiscal Year 2022 audits. He will be the Lead Audit Senior again for the Fiscal Year 2023 audits. So I think that will help a lot to moving forward to make sure that the county starts to become on time. We do appreciate you inviting us here today to join your regular meeting and to present our audit findings and results for Coconino County. And as I said earlier, it really is great to see you all again. I hope next year we can do this in person. Come up and enjoy some cooler weather and actually get to be face to face.
Karen, this is Lindsay. I just wanted to interrupt just for a second and make sure we do have Supervisor Fowler here. Supervisor Fowler, if you can just unmute and let us know, it's showing up as Zoom user, so we want to make sure it's actually Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Fowler, are you able to unmute? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, Taryn.
No problem. Wait, oh, wait a minute. I didn't hear anything.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Yes, Supervisor. Thank you so much.
I've been in and for some reason I couldn't, I wasn't seen, so I'm going to lower my hand here. There we go.
Thank you so much. We're going to call you Supervisor Zoom right now because that's what it's supposed to be. So thank you.
Hard time getting in. Thanks so much. Thanks.
Started to interrupt. Okay. All right, Taryn, sorry.
No, no problem at all. Just want to reminder of who we are. As you know, we've mentioned before in prior meetings that we are, there's an Auditor General's Office, is a legislative agency made up of nonpartisan staff. Although we are accountable to all 90 legislative members, we do report directly to the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, which is a bipartisan group of 10 members, five appointed from the Senate President and five appointed through the Speaker of the House. We are independent source of impartial information concerning state and local governments, which does include Coconino County. We are well versed in, you know, several auditing standards, including those of governmental auditing standards. As mentioned, why we are here, Mr. Peru already mentioned that we are required to come present in accordance with Arizona revised statutes 11661 that directs us to present our audit results to the Board within 90 days of the audit's completion. This gives us a great opportunity for us as your auditors to be in front of you and to provide any information about our work and answer any questions that you might have. And I know that Siri also mentioned, we did issue three annual audit reports in the last year for fiscal year 22. These annual reports are the county's annual comprehensive financial report, a report on internal control and noncompliance, and the federal single audit reports. And as we've done in the past, when we do issue our annual reports, once they're complete, we send you guys a link to the reports through an email, which were dated on April 28 for the annual comprehensive financial report, and then again on May 31 for the report on internal control and noncompliance and the federal single audit report, which both were issued together. The first report, which is the county's annual comprehensive financial report, presents the county's annual financial statements and our opinion as to whether the county's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, in conformity with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. It's wonderful to report for fiscal year 22, we reported an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means the county's financial statements are reliable. The second report is the report on internal control and noncompliance, which is included within the single audit report. And this is where we report any findings and recommendation resulted from the county's financial statement audit. The report on internal control and noncompliance is where we reported two findings we found during the financial statement audits. Finally, the third report, which is the federal single audit report, includes our assessment of the county's compliance with federal program requirements over each federal program we are required to audit. And our report on their internal control over compliance with federal program requirements and the county's schedule of expenditures of federal awards and our opinion on it. The single audit report is where we reported two federal findings, and I will go over both the financial statement and single audit findings with you shortly. Along with the report highlights, as Madam Chair mentioned earlier, we do have single audit report highlights, which is a two-page summary that you received with the single audit report. These highlights includes the county's largest primary revenue sources and the county's largest expenses. The highlights also provide brief information about any key findings and recommendations that we reported and contains link to current and prior year audit reports and user guides that are helpful in understanding the important information presented in the reports. I would like to take the opportunity to present some of the key financial information presented to the county over the last five years. The county's four main revenue sources of revenues consist of federal and state grants and programs, county sales tax, shared state sales tax, and county property taxes, as you can see on the graph. The county's revenues have been primarily increasing each fiscal year with the most significant increases recently with federal and state grants and programs, which have mainly increased over the last three years because the increased federal grant revenues the county has received for COVID-19. Further, the county's sales taxes have increased over the last two years and are primarily recorded in the general fund, the public works fund, and the jail district fund. And as you're aware, the county's sales taxes recorded in the public works fund is restricted for highways and streets, and those recorded in the jails district fund are restricted for the operation and maintenance of the county's jail. The next slide goes over the four primary expense uses that the county has, which are public safety, general government, health and welfare, and highways and streets. The county's general government expenses has fluctuated quite a bit over the last five years for various reasons. In 2018, there was a new municipal accounting system, and there were many projects that were deferred. Then in 20, there were increases due to the COVID response in completion of public safety projects, whereas there were decreases again in 21 because of vacancy savings. whereas there were decreases again in twenty-one because of vacancy savings that the county had. In twenty-two, we saw increases again for general government because of COVID spending dollars. The other three expenses have remained relatively consistent with slight increases in public safety as the county has responded to numerous emergencies such as floods, fires, and the COVID nineteen pandemic. On the next slide, we highlight revenues, expenses, and changes in net position over a five-year trend. And as you can see, the county's revenues have exceeded its expenses since fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Also, as you can see, the black line represents the county's net position, which has increased every fiscal year since two thousand and eighteen. Most importantly, the county's overall net position has increased by forty-one point five million dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. A total net position for the county is two hundred and twenty-eight point three million dollars. However, I do want to note that a portion of that net position is not spendable at the end of fiscal year twenty-two because a hundred and seventy-two million of that balance was invested in capital assets. Another hundred and points, hundred point seven million is restricted, and the remaining balance was a negative forty-four point four million, primarily because of the county's net pension liability, which is seventy-six point seven million dollars. On our next graph, I would like to highlight the county's federal expenditures that are presented each year in the single audit report. Although the county received grants from fourteen federal agencies during fiscal year twenty-two, you can see from the bar chart that over forty percent of, forty-five percent of the federal expenditures were from the U.S. Department of Treasury in fiscal year twenty-two, specifically the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. You can also see significant increases in federal expenditures starting in fiscal year twenty-one with expenditures nearly doubling between fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two because of thirteen four, thirteen point four million dollar increase in federal expenditures. The large increase in fiscal year twenty-two was primarily because of COVID nineteen emergency assistance monies the county received, including an increase of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund program and new federal awards from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for the Good Neighbor Authority and the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. Sorry. Okay, now I would like to discuss the four findings and the recommendations that we reported to the county in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. As previously noted, the single audit report includes both the financial statement and the federal compliance audit findings. Included in there, there were two financial statement findings and two federal compliance audit findings, along with the county's responses to them. It is important to note that in the prior year, we reported two financial statements and three federal compliance audit findings. The county corrected two of the prior year federal compliance findings over its COVID nineteen epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases program, and the remaining three prior audit findings related to the county's late financial and single audit issuances and IT controls, which were partially completed because the county implemented and improved policies and procedures. We reported both a financial statement and a federal compliance finding over the late issuance of the county's annual comprehensive financial report and the single audit report. These reports were required to be issued by March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, which is nine months after fiscal year end. However, the financial statement audit was issued one month late, and the single audit was issued two months late. This has primarily occurred because both the fiscal years two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one reports were issued late, largely due to key employee turnover in the Finance Department. And as Siri noted earlier, there's a lot of improvement within this finding, and the issuances were definitely much, much better in the prior years. So, and I definitely contributed to her staff. In addition, included in the timeliness finding, we did report the county has not issued its annual expenditure limitation reports for fiscal years two thousand and eighteen through twenty-two. We have received all five of the outstanding reports from the county on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are currently reviewing those reports at this time. Although this is a repeat finding since two thousand and eighteen, we did not enough identify any significant errors in the financial statements and note disclose, note disclosures for this year's audit. And the new staff in place were able to provide this documentation sooner than in prior years. To correct this finding, we recommend that the county provide key financial information to the auditors by the agreed upon deadlines established at the beginning of the audit to ensure timeliness, issuance of its financial statements and single audit report, and to comply with the state laws and issue those outstanding expenditure limitation reports for fiscal years two thousand and eighteen through twenty-two. The county anticipates correcting this error and implementing these recommendations by March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The second financial statement finding identified deficiencies in the county's controls over its IT systems and data. Our report identified several recommendations to implement and follow its IT policies and procedures over restricting access to its IT systems and managing system configuration and changes. In prior years, we reported recommendations over updating and testing the contingency plan that the county has corrected in fiscal year twenty-two. This finding initially occurred in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and the county has made progress on implementing several recommendations since then. The county reported that it fully anticipates correcting these deficiencies by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The last finding I would like to go over with you is for the finances, for the federal compliance finding. I would like to point out that we audited seven federal programs, and we reported one federal finding related to those programs, which was under the Good Neighbor Authority. The county's flood control district administers this program and spent forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars on unallowable purchases that it requested and received reimbursement for as part of the program's one point four million dollars of total expenditures. These expenditures were used for construction and planning services that were incurred before the grant period began, and the district did not receive required preapproval from the federal agency, which was U.S. Department of Agriculture. As a result, the U.S. Department of Agriculture may require the county to reimburse the forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars of unallowable costs and other county monies or maybe use to send for other allowable expenditures before the grant expires. To correct this finding, the county should improve existing policies and procedures for federal grants by requiring the reviewer to verify for that preapprovals were obtained for any federal agency when the costs were incurred before the award start date and work with the U.S. Department of Agriculture to resolve the forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars of program money spent in violation of the federal award terms, which may involve returning those funds. The county does anticipate that this finding will be corrected by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. This completes our presentation of the twenty-two audit reports, including the four audit findings. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Members of the board, and of course, as always, Taryn, we really appreciate your thorough review and analysis of county finances. And we know that we have had some discrepancies, and we have been working very hard, and our finance team and quite frankly, all of Coconino County has been working very hard. We take our responsibility to our constituents and to our our communities very seriously, and we appreciate your assistance and Auditor General's Office's assistance in general, making sure that we uphold our standards to the very highest qualities. So thank you with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. And I do want to reiterate that we have had a great working relationship with the county staff, with the Finance Department. Siri's group, Abby's group have been phenomenal to work with. We've seen a lot of improvements. If you looked at the audit results from two thousand and twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two, every year they've gotten better. There's less findings, and they are just such a great team to work with. And I do really want to make sure that you are aware that we really appreciate all their efforts.
Good. Well, thank you for your comments on that. That means a lot to us. So thank you. Members of the board, any comments, questions? You know, I will, just a couple that I would also like just to point out that, you know, in our five-year audit, we can really see two thousand and twenty-two the success that we have had here in Coconino County in obtaining federal funding for much-needed projects. And, you know, I think your graphs really show that. And that probably is one of the big stories to take from two thousand and twenty-one, where we had fourteen point seven to two thousand and twenty-two, we had twenty-eight point one million dollars. So, and that's a lot of work and effort on the part of Coconino County to get the federal funds we need to complete a lot of the projects, especially with our flood mitigation work, but also, as you've pointed out, our COVID response. So, and the second is, I'm very proud of county, Coconino County's net position has increased in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, and quite frankly, that's not something that every county can brag about. So it's, that's nice to see, and it's good to point out for members of our community as well. So those would be my two comments, that and our strong commitment to make sure that we do have our financial statement and compliance audit, audit that's going to be a hundred percent. And we appreciate your help on that.
You're welcome.
Other members of the board, Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. No, I just, first off, thank you for the presentation. Very, very clear. It's really helpful to see the visuals, so the graphs were really important. So thank you for that. And what I take away from this is that we're improving, that there's been some errors in the past, and you know, the errors that you're going through in the, in the findings are less and less each time, and that's the direction we want to go. So we want to just continue growing and continuing moving forward. And so thank you for working with our staff to make this as easy process as possible. And we look forward to seeing even better results next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, members of the board? Supervisor Gay, I see you bubbled up. Did you have some comments to make?
Madam Chair, yes, I'm just thinking, reiterating what both of my colleagues have already stated, you know, I think it's very important that we make sure that we have everything is in compliance fiscally and that, you know, where that's very important and all the deadlines that need to be met, like the, the reports of, the reporting and stuff like that. So I just, and deadlines are very important, and I've expressed this, expressed that before, but all in all, I think, you know, this report is very positive, you know, to us as a board for today. And we just hope that, you know, later on, you know, we're, we're going to be in compliance all the way around with everything corrected. So so I just want to say thank you for Siri and Taryn. Thank you so much for, and then plus probably some of your staff that has helped, you know, in reviewing and as far as getting, getting us, you know, where we need to be in the reports that have been submitted to your office. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Supervisor Gay. Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to ask of our staff how these, I know that we've had some staff shortage, and that was part of the issue. Just want to find out how these can be corrected in the future. I know they're working on it, but I think it's, it's really good to hear from, it'll be good to hear from our staff to see how these can be prevented in the future. We've had audits every year, and we do go through this process every year, and it's not anything that is new. So I just want to hear from them as to how these are being addressed and how will be addressed in the future.
Madam Chair, I can just not respond to that.
Sure, our County Manager.
Well, a couple of things, Supervisor Fowler, members of the board. Number one is to, from previous years, we had some catch-up to do from previous years prior to my arrival and Siri's arrival. So we did some catch-up that was done. At the same time, filling positions was important. And when we look at the the pipeline for talent in the audit area, particularly in the accountant area, the pipeline has been, you know, pretty, pretty constrained based on our ability to fill positions. You know, as Siri indicated, we have asked Abby Velazquez to, to take over, and Abby has been with the organization for several years and transferred into that, into the division upstairs from another county department and her and her team. And Siri's leadership, we've really been able to, to get caught up and then having the staff to do the work. And so it is a, it is a, the audit area is an important function of any finance department, which we're doing this one. And it's, you know, it's, it's an ongoing workload. I think also getting that, that the rhythm, if you will, of being able to time everything that's due to the Auditor General for their work based on our work. Also want to appreciate and acknowledge the work of the departments because a lot of the work that we do entails working with each department on the documentation and our processes. And so it is really everyone's effort that goes into providing the documentation for the testing that the Auditor General's Office does. So at this point in time, as we've indicated, and as evidenced by by the Auditor General report, the findings are fewer and fewer. As I indicated, the staffing will also help us improve on the timing of the issuance of that information to the Auditor General. So all indications are, we're progressing in the right direction. If we do have anything that props up, we will come to the board to alert the board and the organization because, of course, our work also has to time and synchronize very closely with the County Treasurer's Office. So there's a lot of checks and balances that need to occur here. So those would be my comments. Siri, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, County Manager and Madam Chair and members of the board. What Steve said is exactly right, and I, and I also appreciate the comment that we do this every year, and you're right, we do. We would hope it would be routine, but one of the maybe little-known things is that accounting is also always sort of evolving, government accounting. So new accounting standards actually are always coming out as well that we have to then incorporate. So it is a little bit more than just taking, you know, what we did the prior year and replicating the process. We have, for example, this audit that we're discussing now had a new lease standard that was relatively complicated to implement for the county. Not too bad, but we're now coming up on a new one related to software reporting that's going to be more complicated. So, you know, every time we have something new to learn and something else to factor in as well as just sort of the routine year over year. So it does make it a really complicated field, government accounting and financial reporting. And we're so lucky that we have been able to bring Abby over to our team, as Steve mentioned, because she's really taken this role on and run with it and done a great job in getting us up to date and implementing the new standards as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have another question.
Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, you know, we have forty-six or so dollars that is, that was, I guess that came up within the flood district. And that happened in the public works. So, and wondering if our staff need training or additional training? I know that you all are doing that. I realize that standards are changing all the time, but these audits are very important, and our accountability within each department and within the county, well, across the county, it's very important. And it is our responsibility as a board to question these. And I'm just wondering, why do we have a forty-six thousand that is, that was, that's in the flood district? That is, don't remember how it's, I guess it was on, not supposed to be used that way. So how, how do we address that?
Madam Chair, if you would mind, I would ask Lucinda Agriani, the District Administrator, to respond to that particular finding. But I also would note that while we would want zero percent based on anything we do, given the amount of funding that we have received through federal sources and the specifics of this particular finding, you know, I don't, I don't view that as problematic, although we want to, and we will ensure that that does not occur. In this case, we will use other funds that can be used to, to basically reimburse the grant for that amount. But again, it is not problematic, and ask Lucinda to make more comments.
That's good.
Yep. Thank you. I, thank you, Steve. And I just want to note that the finding was that the period of work was not within the period of the grant, and many times we get invoices, and they do need to be separated out within the period of the grant. Typically, what happens is they extend over the period, the work will extend, potentially extend, particularly when you're in the midst of a disaster. And so that occurred. The forty-two thousand or forty-six thousand represents one percent of that grant amount for that specific grant for museum on forest work, which was three point five million. So certainly, our goal is to get to a hundred percent perfect. We're going to do the best we can. We're fortunate. We have a great business manager in Sean Lioma. And in the midst of a disaster, occasionally there are going to be issues, and we're going to work to resolve those, and we'll work with USDA. The funds were not. The funds were not spent irresponsibly or that, that, the point was the term of their, the, the funds, the expenditure was eligible and legitimate, it was not spent within that window. All of it was not spent. So we'll resolve that with them. Um, they're thrilled with the work that got done. We're thrilled, the community's thrilled. So we'll take this as a learning lesson and move forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And that's really important for the public to know that. So thank you for the explanation. And I think that um, our audit system, yes, with all the federal dollars that have come through and then the shortage in staff. And just really, um, whenever there's a turnover within the departments, it just delays everything even more. So I think it's very important for us to just really um, explain the reason why um, these, uh, the audits are coming out as they are. So I appreciate your explanation.
All right, thank you and thank you, Lucinda. Any other comments or questions, members of the board? Seeing none, Taryn, did you need any, I, I know this was a report from the auditor general. Did you need any action on the part of the board at this time in terms of a, accepting the audit as presented? Or are we good um, uh, just as a, as a discussion item?
Madam Chair, we are good.
All right, very good. Thank you, Taryn, for you and your team.
It was nice to see everybody.
Yeah, thank you. We'll see you next year, maybe in person, okay?
Hopefully in person. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. All right, members of the board, um, uh, we are going on and, and any kind of wrap-up comments. I will, I will just say that I am uh, uh, pleased that um, the um, we're moving in the right direction in terms of full compliance. And I appreciate the hard work that's gone in by our finance team and, and the departments in, in ensuring uh, that we are in fact uh, making um, uh, coming into full compliance here. Uh, I know sometimes it's crazy and sometimes, quite frankly, the regulations don't make a whole lot of sense. Uh, but we appreciate all the efforts in our finance team and all across our departments to make sure that our monies are, are well-spent and well, uh, well-managed. So thank you very much. All right, moving on, we are now on sixty-one. And uh, the discussion possible, discussion update and possible direction to staff regarding legislative items for the CSA Legislative Summit and the county's twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-four state legislative agenda. And I know we heard from you Gregory this morning on a lot of the uh, state legislative matters. And of course Keith from the federal, uh, it, and I take it these are some additions you'd like us to look at for the CSA summit coming up?
Yes, Madam Chair and County Manager Peru and board members. This is a separate item in terms of consideration by the board to direct the submission into the CSA Legislative Policy uh, Roadmap Process. Um, those proposals are due August seventh. And uh, based on conversations that we've had with your colleagues, Chair, over the summer, we have recommended two items for submission into CSA's process. And obviously this would be debated on at the summit here in Coquigno County in October. And if the body of Arizona's fifteen counties recommends uh, putting these forward, it would become part of the association's legislative agenda um, across the fifteen counties. So that's why we're here today. And as part of that discussion, of course, is the county's uh, state legislative agenda and how the county's legislative agenda fits in with CSA. So we've kind of developed an approach where we're recommending two items for submission. I can get into that as well as a discussion on the board's legislative agenda at the state level so that we understand the, the operational ecosystem that we're going to be going forward with. And of course, this is a continuing conversation on the legislative agenda. And we can always come back, add or remove things as things develop and, and once we get a, a, a state advocate on board. So uh, with that, um, we're here to discuss two recommendations. Uh, one is the DFFM uh, wildfire emergency response line item that we proposed to engage CSA with. Uh, we believe that this is, would be an effective approach to bring all of Arizona's fifteen counties. While some have fortunately not had to draw on these funds, we know many of our, our peer counties have had to, including Pima, Hila, Graham, um, and even Yuma County. So what we've done is we've engaged at the staff level through the manager's office, uh, Yuma, Santa Cruz, Pima County and Cochise County. We've also reached out to your colleagues, Chair, and board members in Hila County, Graham County and Navajo County to build a coalition on this. And so what we're proposing today to submit to CSA is a re-infusion of the category three flood mitigation sub-allocation of this fund uh, that we've been substantially benefiting from as a result of our post-wildfire flood mitigation needs. And so we're, we're proposing a thirty-five million dollar annual infusion into that sub-allocation, an ongoing piece. And so um, we can uh, stop there and answer any questions. But just to note, the fiscal situation of the state uh, heading into this budget year FY twenty-four will be challenging. The governor's office has put out a notification that they're anticipating a three hundred nineteen million dollar general fund shortfall in FY twenty-four as a result of the escalating cost of the empowerment scholarship program. And so we're closely monitoring that. Originally, the legislature said it would cost sixty-five million and then it went up to three hundred and twenty million. And then now it's projected possibly at nine hundred and forty-three million. So we are coming in with an ongoing ask. Um, as you know, this past year, ongoing requests were very limited. There was a lot of one-time money, but very limited ongoing funds. So that's kind of the ecosystem that we're operating in. So we, working with Wes, we came up with the thirty-five million, thinking that that would be uh, kind of threading the needle, not asking for too much, but not asking for too little so that there's substantial funding within the fund. And it is our understanding that that sub-allocation for flood mitigation has been uh, completely pledged at this point. So there is no longer any funding remaining within that sub-allocated fund. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Uh, you know, just a couple of comments and then I'll see if the board members have some questions. Uh, you know, the original DFFM funding was in fact, and intended as temporary funding. And it was to deal with um, some specific matters that were uh, being addressed here in the state. Um, but I think for those of us who, who live in the northern part uh, with forests, uh, understand the ongoing threat of wildfire. And the DFFM uh, funding has been really essential to help us here in Coquigno County and other uh, forested communities uh, when we need an emergency response. Uh, and I know that uh, when the governor was up here in uh, uh, Coquigno County, uh, my colleagues underscored the need to make this an ongoing uh, line item. And I'm, I'm sorry that there is uh, a overcharge, a substantial uh, over fun, uh, over, I should say cost, not charge, cost on uh, the um, voucher program, uh, which seems to be sapping uh, the county or the, the state budget of uh, uh, needed monies for other important projects such as this DFFM. So I certainly don't want us to stop our advocacy with the governor. Uh, um, I think we do need to take a look at that voucher program, needless to say. Um, but I certainly think this is worthy of the governor's attention and it's worthy of putting in as an ongoing line item in the Arizona budget. So uh, I, I really think we need to proceed full steam ahead. Uh, and I think it's also very important that we reach out to the other uh, northern Arizona um, uh, counties that suffer uh, the consequences of very serious uh, fire threats uh, as well. And we basically start a coalition to get this done. So I appreciate uh, your work on this Gregory and, and Keith. And I want us to move forward on this, uh, just, just because there's a over expenditure in one item that was never intended to be um, funded at that level, uh, doesn't mean we should, that we should stop our advocacy on this DFFM funding that we really need up here. So thanks. Any other comments from members of the board? All right, anything else that you have on, on CSA?
No, so we'll switch over to the, just thank you, Madam Chair, for those comments and we'll certainly be.
Supervisor Fowler?
I'm sorry to interrupt Gregory, but I just want to make a comment that this is very important. Um, Madam Chair, I'm still having little technical difficulty here. Um, but I'm really happy that we, we continue to advocate for this. We did bring it up to the governor and anybody that we can talk to, that's what we've been doing. And Keith and Gregory have been doing a great job and this is something that's very important. Arizona is very diverse in each of the fifteen counties. But I believe that um, the CSA will support this and I just want to um, pursue it. Continue the av- uh, advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler.
All right. Just that a majority of counties have drawn some money from this fund. So it's a good one to bring forward to CSA because well, Coquigno and Hila have been the largest recipients. Most of the counties, not just in the northern part of the state, but most of the counties have had some issues and have had to draw upon this fund. And I think we're in a cycle where there's emergencies nearly every year. Like fortunately, this year's been fairly quiet around the state. But I think the reality is that somewhere in the state, somebody's going to need this kind of help every fire and flood season. So might as well put something in the budget permanently rather than, you know, cross our fingers because hope isn't a strategy as far as nobody's going to dodge the, the, the fire and flood issue permanently. So having a permanent fund, I think, helps all the counties benefit or whichever ones are impacted. And, and, and just one point piece on that, we're talking about reimbursements in some cases within a matter of days rather than years. Yeah, so that's, that's really a key point here as well as this program has been incredibly responsive and, and been able to get funds and implementation of projects directly into the community quickly to provide needed relief to our community members who suffer from these disasters.
My, uh, Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add that the, these programs are so important and we really need to push our, our legislatures to, to uh, put in, enact permanent funding because it, it's considering how year to year to year, there are emergencies around the state. I'm just thinking in my two and a half years being on the board, we've, how many fires, how many floods have we had? You know, during that tenure, maybe ten fires and maybe fifty floods. You know, and, and so the thought of the, the FFM having to go ask for funding every year just doesn't make sense. We really need to get this to be a permanent piece of the budget. And the, the reimbursements, those are important. When we first started, we were getting reimbursements that were two, three years behind. Now, now because of uh, the expenditure, uh, not expenditures, uh, they've been speeding things up in this last year, we've gotten better reimbursements, you know. And so, you know, as, as a county that has depended on this, we need those reimbursements. And if we can set up a system that statewide makes these, the, this funding permanently available to all counties, that's just better for Arizona. So uh, I just wanted to reiterate that we, we really need to uh, to get this done and, and talk to our legislatures to, to find a way to, to make it happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you Vice Chair.
Uh, any other? Madam Chair, if, if I were out again?
Sure.
This is, this is.
Try to begin, so yes, uh-huh.
Okay, so I'm, I'm thinking that we need to put together a um, an educational pamphlet on this particular one. I know that flood district and the staff are really good at putting the educational um, leaflets or flyers together, uh, brochure to really explain and to show visit, visit um, um, to show in, in uh, pictures and just explanation why it's important and showing the numbers that is, that, you know, I think that will go a long way in educating them. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I know we have, uh, I think we could use what we've got and kind of specialize in how to get our DFFM funding. And then I'd also like to see this coalition and maybe put together a, um, we have our Coquigno County one, but then work on getting a coalition uh, county one together to really show the governor how important it is, not just for us, but for many of our forested counties here in, in Arizona. So I think that's a great idea. So.
Absolutely right. And I think she's learning how important this is.
I, I agree. I agree. So, uh, and thank you Supervisor Begay.
Yes, um, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, I think it's really important, you know, that we continue to advocate and um, for this, these efforts because, you know, you never know when there's going to be a deficit, you know, with funds and stuff like that. And you, as you know, it will really, really um, impact the financial requests that we're submitting, you know, for, for um, um, like the DFFM funding requests and stuff like that. So uh, with that, you know, it's important that, you know, we, 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 we try and plan and also to get anything we can get handled on, you know, to ma- to ensure that, you know, um, uh, Hobbs is um, pretty much, you know, and others uh, are, are, that can readily help us or set, uh, set us to a, sent us to a direction where we would be successful in getting some of these funds. So I'm very uh, supportive of these initiatives that um, uh, Government Affairs Team has put together and with the support of the board and administration, uh, we can uh, certainly come up with something and pursue more. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Begay. So any other uh, comments? Uh, that's, let's move forward, Government Affairs Team, uh, and uh, work on getting a coalition together and uh, kind of getting a pamphlet together as well as working with that coalition to get something together as well.
Absolutely. And thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members, for your support on this. We've already begun that coalition building with our peer counties. We've engaged CSA. And so with, with this direction to submit this, we'll really be uh, shifting into a high gear and, and crafting those advocacy pieces as we move forward to ensure that we, we bring this home for Coquigno County and the state of Arizona. So with that, um, shifting gears, I know Jay Kristolman was going to join us um, here. Um, I don't know if he's on, uh, but uh, Jay just wanted to make sure Jay was here. Um, so the next proposal that we've been working on and, and really this comes out of the work of uh, uh, the Joint Land Use Study, I see Jay's here. And the Joint Land Use Study was conducted in two thousand and seventeen uh, through a grant through DOD. And that led to a series of implementation recommendations to protect the missions of our military installations here in Coquigno County that have a critical role in our national defense at the Naval Observatory as well as the uh, Camp Navajo facility, the largest National Guard training facility in the state. And so out of that JLU's process, an implementation committee was created. And there was uh, the recommendation and Jay's team and community development sought a grant to implement the JLU's through what's called the Military Installation Sustainability Grant through the DOD. And that implementation uh, committee had some draft uh, uh, ideas in terms of legislation and helping to harmonize uh, the planning process around military installations in our community. And so as a result of that Military Installation Sustainability Grant, uh, Matrix Consulting, working with the Joint Land Use Implementation Committee have crafted model legislation uh, that will help to uh, reduce encroachment and ensure that uh, community planning efforts at the city, town, county levels are harmonized around our installations. We know that in Arizona, our military installations play a key economic and national defense role. And so they're under increasing threat as our state has grown because of the possibility of incompatible uh, development around their operations, which could impact their operations and missions. And so what we proposed before you today is really the outcome of that process. And Jay, I'll defer to you if you had anything to add here in terms of kind of how I've captured this before we get into the nitty-gritty on the actual legislation.
Well, thank you Greg and Madam Chair and Supervisors. Good afternoon, Jay Kristolman, Community Development. Um, yeah, so, so we are near completion with our Military Installation Sustainability Grant. We have one more task that has yet to come out of that. Um, the model legislation uh, that we've been working with Greg and his team for, um, there, there's two, it's twofold and I don't want to get into too much of what Gregory's going to talk about. But uh, the initial attempt, that model legislation was more for the specifics of our region. Um, but because the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and nineteen adopted the Joint Land Use Study as an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, our military installations are all. Our military installations are already protected uh, from sustainability efforts, so. Um, Supervisor Ryan and the Government Affairs Team um, kinda circled back and, and determined, well, maybe we should try to. Attack this from a larger, uh, broader perspective with legislation that could. Benefit military installations in every county. In Arizona, so I'm gonna go back to you Greg to, to let you know or how you can share how that all unfolded. Thank you for the introduction.
Appreciate that Jay. So originally, you know, with CSA, we're really looking at fifteen county ideas. How can we build strategy across our peer counties on mutually shared issues to elevate those issues to. To the county level at that level with CSA, and so. Um, in working with Supervisor Ryan on this legislation, as Jay mentioned. It was initially crafted at the local level with definitions that would only apply to our two installations, and so. In thinking about a possible, you know, and uh, submission to CSA, we. Recommended broadening it out so that it's applicable to. Um, our seven counties in the state, including us, that have military installations within their boundaries, and so. We've uh, shopped this around with Craig Sullivan to see his input on it. He had some great advice in terms of. Uh, the background and how it came out of our, our DOD planning efforts through our grants. That we've drawn federal funding down towards the county to, to facilitate compatible use planning. And so uh, just to get into the legislation is. It really would work best as a comprehensive package and we've. Engaged with Travis Schulte, the Legislative Liaison at DEMA. And so while we recognize that counties are focused on county issues, this is broad in the sense. That it would impact, you know, cities, towns, and counties. And one of the key pieces of the, of the statutory language is that it does not reduce. Remove or otherwise impact private property development rights. Or restrict, remove, or prohibit land uses on private property near installations. Rather, the, the recommendation in the packet that we provided is that it. Protects military installations by building on existing statutes entitled thirty-seven to preserve and conserve open space. Adjacent to and near military installations. It requires cities, towns, and counties within the influence area of the military installations to consult with. Advising solicit comment from applicable military installations. Um, officials for all amendments to general plans and comprehensive plans, zoning requests. And development plans for properties within the influence area of the installations. And it requires an update to the general and comprehensive plans to include. Policies and land uses that promote compatible uses around these installations, and so. It also directs the State Land Department to de- develop and maintain legal descriptions. And electronic maps of military installation influence areas. And make those available to the public through the Department of Real Estate. Cap- and to counties and municipalities and the public. And it also requires property owners to provide real estate disclosure. And or lease notices to prospective buyers and renters. That the property is within the influence area of the installation and subject to the li- legislation. And it also requires the disclosure to be recorded on any property that is fully or partially within an influence area. For the disclosure to be included on plots dividing land, subject to the influence area. And it modifies the Military Airport Exchange Fund. Purposes to have all land and areas around all state and federal military installations that have defined influence areas. And so this legislation is a comprehensive package. It affects many different areas of the titles, but I think given um. Coke- recommendation would be given the leadership that Coconino County has shown in this area. Through its Joint Land Use Study, through the Implementation Committee and the grant. That was drawn down to Community Development to implement our JLU's. That we're really in a position to elevate this issue uh, to our peer counties. It will be a heavy lift. But I think it's something that we could also engage in many, in many conversations with our peer colleagues on. I've already had a conversation with Government Affairs Director. Uh, at Yuma County about this, and they're having encroachment issues at the Yuma Proving Ground. For example, and they're very interested in this, so. I know Supervisor Ryan unfortunately couldn't join us today, and this is near and dear to his heart, but. Really wanted to bring this forward because I think it's an area where. The Board of Supervisors and the county can exercise leadership. With our peer counties and really develop the, the conversation as we move forward to help protect our installations. As they're uh, undergoing challenges through uh, un- incompatible development, so. Uh, with that, I pause to answer any questions and can certainly dive into anything, but. Recommendation would be to bring this forward to CSA, understanding that maybe this year it doesn't go through. But we at least prime the conversation, we engage the coalition. And we can really set ourselves up to continue to work on this issue as leaders in the state of Arizona.
Alright, thank you for that very thorough review, and I am ver- also very sorry that uh. Matt's not with us because I know this has not only been near and dear to his heart, but. He's been very active and, and really uh, has exercised, sized a tremendous amount of leadership on. Um, this whole area, so I look forward to continued discussions with him. Uh, I certainly uh, would be in agreement with the recommendation to carry this forward. Um, and to see, reach out to those other uh, counties that do have uh, military bases and installations. Uh, in their counties as well, and you've listed them here, and. I'm assuming you and Matt have reached out to these areas, uh, is that correct Gregory?
Oh, I've reached out at the staff level. I'm waiting for Supervisor Ryan to. Uh, return and his plan is to engage with his peers. At the Board of Supervisors level within these counties to, to, to help uh, build the coalition around this.
Very good. Any comments, questions, members of the board? So seeing none. Yes, Supervisor Fowler.
Well, this is very timely, you know, at NACO this year, the focus was military installation. At our, where I'm a member of the Veterans um, Committee at uh, National Counties Association. And this, and this has been in discussion for um, some time and we actually delivered a. A presentation there as well. Um, but you know, the military installation, there's a, NACO is talking about um. Is considering establishing a committee, uh, and this year, you know, RAPPY is a big um. I know that our county has and, uh, through Supervisor Ryan. Has really been um, in the forefront at the national level even. With the, working with the military installation, so I think this is really great. Um, all those that were at the, at the conference and really in tune with what's the movement is at the national level. I believe that they will support this and we just, again, once again. You know, that state legislators, we just have to really educate them. Uh, and what the, um, on what this is and. And why and what all the benefits that go with it. Uh, I know Department of Veterans Affairs and Department of. I think they had the, and Department of Energy, I'm thinking that what was even there, so. Um, you know, at the national level, there's a big, big movement that's happening, so I think this is very timely. So thank you so much. I, I think this is a great proposal.
Alright, any other comments, questions? If, if not, I think Gregory, what you're asking for is action on the part of the board.
Uh, with. Just direction, Madam Chair, just direction that we're okay to submit this. I don't believe.
You just want some direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I think that you've gotten responses from the board members uh, with regards to both of your proposals.
Yes, really appreciate it. We have good, solid direction to move forward. Just really appreciate the board's uh, support on this and, and the continuing conversations that we'll have on this. You know, this is really the beginning of these proposals and has, as we enter in. To not only finding our state advocate who will be on the ground. Down in Phoenix on our behalf, but also the CSA process that'll be unfolding. Will really be ramping up and keep developing our communications pieces, setting up meetings with our delegations. And working with our peer counties on these issues, so just really appreciate that, and so. Uh, with that, wanted to pivot over to the state legislative.
Can I add, Ma- Madam Chair? You know, if the state, if we were really to do this, we would be the. Uh, once again, Coconino County will be creating an example. Um, in getting this through state legislators and making that um, a. A model for the country, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Fowler, yes. We're supportive guys, let's do it. Get it done.
We have our marching orders, so.
Yeah, let's get it done, so.
Um, so just shifting gears, because I think and. You know, this obviously will be a continuing conversation as we, we go into the legislature and we've. We've kinda crafted a, 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 an approach this year where we recognize that. The county has some fundamental legislative values. And these values have, have persisted over multiple sessions, multiple delegations. And they're really core to who, who our community is. And the values that we wanna seek with our decision makers and leaders at the state legislature. But with that, we've also recognized that we're operating. Um, within, within a challenging environment. We just had. One of the longest legislative sessions in the history of, the longest in the history of the state. We had multiple budgets vetoed. We have split divided government even within the caucuses. And so we've kind of, kind of developed an approach where, and I owe this to Corey Ringenberg, I thought it was a great. Analogy is, it's on the menu, or it's in the pantry, but not on the menu. And so what we've kinda put together as we've discussed this and you, hopefully you'll be familiar with the document as this builds off of. Last year's legislative agenda, but. We've, we've captured our legislative values and the outstanding or top, you know, fifty list of what's out there. And then we've tried to distill that into some top ten recommendations on what we could proceed. With and what we believe might have the best chances of. Of passing down at the legislature and where we could develop our time and be strategic about our advocacy, and so. We proposed a legislative menu that's largely untouched, um. From last year, we've, we've added some language on supporting reentry programs because that's been so successful. Here in the county. Excuse me, we've reached out to our elected officials and department directors for in, input on the legislative values. We've received some feedback from them and incorporated that. Wanna thank uh, the legal defender. Uh, the public defender as well as um. Uh, Elections Department for their feedback as well as adult probation. And so we've condensed that into a, a two-page legislative values document, and so. With that, I, I don't wanna go through the whole thing right now. But I wanna pause for any questions or observations that the board might have in terms of. Feedback on this before getting into the legislative agenda.
Well, I assume what you're referring to is the documents we received from you, you yesterday?
Um, those would be the documents in your packet. I can share my screen here.
I think that's good because you've got a lot, we have a lot of uh, documents here.
Okay, let me share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
No, it's, uh, there it comes, here it comes, yes.
Okay, and is the toolbar out of the way? Excellent. So this is the document I'm referring to. Last year, we called this a legislative agenda. And then we had developed priorities based on this where we thought. Could be seen, so basically the idea this year is that we call this our values. These are some of what we can engage on. It gives staff the ability to. To make determinations when legislation or strike everything amendments are put forward to oppose or support. Kind of like what we had last, yesterday happened with the compromise on Proposition four hundred. You can see we have some overall policies, the flood control district. Forest restoration, water, transportation, short-term rentals, economic development. The military installation sustainability. Um, environmental protection and health, education, health and human services, elections. Justice and public safety and emergency management. And so that, this kind of outlines, you know, some of the broader policies that I know board members. Have discussed and, and wanna make sure that we're focusing on. And then the second document is this abbreviated document where we've. Where we've condensed these down, you know, into what we think. Staff recommendations are, where we can have significant impact, impact heading into the agenda. Or the legend, sorry, the legislative session. And so this is what we're calling the legislative agenda. So the idea is we have a pantry and we have a menu. And so this would be our recommendations on what we think we could have the most influence on, given the ecosystem that we're in. Uh, next legislative session, and while the legislative session we were just in, just ended yesterday. It's already time to start working on next session and. Getting before our representatives, setting up meetings, developing advocacy pieces. So that we can continue to, to bring this county's uh. You know, strategic vision as it, as it relates to what's happening at the state, so. I'll pause there and can certainly go back and forth between the screens.
Can I say something?
Yeah, yeah, Vice Chair, please.
Uh, I, I just think that this uh, this legislative agenda, having, having the, the bullets out like that are. Are important for us to access uh, more readily so that we can include uh, the appropriate bullets. In all the different test testimonials and uh, comments at, at meetings or whatnot that we're doing so that we can. We can truly share and, and be vocal and. Utilize this language in, in the different speeches that we're all doing in our different, different events and uh, meetings and whatnot, so. Um, I would like to see, once we have the final version, this out more, more readily available. And uh, when, and I'm gonna ask. Uh, you guys for, from me when you're assisting me in preparing for some of these testimonials to please highlight these and let me know. From this list which ones you're highlighting so that I can, I can better articulate those values, because I really appreciate. Um, having that guidance that way so that we all stay on point, so thank you.
Alright, thank you Vice Chair, and I agree with his comments. I, I think it's an excellent way to kinda get us all uh, focused. Quite frankly, as a county, uh, and in our efforts as supervisors on uh, promoting. Uh, the, of legislative values for Coconino County, so. I do like it. What I was pausing at is to take a look at, you know, this looks good. And my initial thoughts on the list that you presented. Uh, there are a couple of, of additions I can think of to add to it. So I, I think this may be an ongoing discussion, if you will, and, and. It's probably gonna be kind of a living document as, as certain issues or, or matters arise um. Uh, that, that we may take a more active role in, so. Um, but I think in general, it's a, I think a good. Way to get us all focused and moving in a uniform. And united direction on our legislative agenda, so I, I also. Uh, really appreciate your efforts on this Gregory.
Thank you Madam Chair, and thank you Vice Chair, just. Also recognizing Keith's work here as well as Sophia, we. We engaged in two policy summits to really distill this down. Um, at the staff level and, and think about where we can make some inroads with our legislature and. It is a living document and a continuing conversation, and. We all know that there'll be the un- unknown unknowns that emerge and. That'll require action and we will, we'll, we'll bring that back to you and continue to have the conversation and. Just look forward to this uh, continuing conversation and as we. As we bring on an advocate at the state level through our RFP process. We'll also be engaging them for their expertise and what they think they can do, so. Absolutely, this isn't the final time we'll be having this conversation, but. As, since we were talking about CSA and the state, we wanted to make sure that. This was part of the conversation because what goes to CSA doesn't limit us what we can do as a county. Um, on our own values, and so that's, that was the component on why we had this, wanted to bring this forward today, so. Just really.
Yeah, and I think it could also be useful when uh, we're working, when we're advocating down at the state legislature. And when we're meeting with our representatives. Uh, you know, um, I, I think it's, it's great to have something like this, um. Uh, and that we can produce and quite frankly that um. We can let them know what our values are and where we stand.
Absolutely, and we'll also be tuning up the tri-fold brochure. The state legislative priorities that we had last year. Um, and then we'll go through the same process, of course, on the federal side. Once we get a discussion with the board and kinda know what happens after the August recess. But that's the intent, is to really get things tuned up and moving forward now. So we can make effective use of our time to deliver heading into January when the, the legislature will be convening, so.
Good, and I was trying to find the tri-fold, not finding here. Um, because I wondered if these were uh, uh, pretty much uh, consistent with what we had last year.
It's very consistent, we've ref. It's very consistent. We've refined some of the language down. We're continuing, for example, to work with Wes on the hazard incident period. We believe that that may be best targeted, for example, at the federal level rather than with DEMA, since DEMA takes guidance from this. From the federal uh, level. And so we've also added some, some language there, for example, on reentry. And then also supporting some of the issues around the uh, federal poverty level and. We're work, we've reached out to Kim Musselman. Well, I know last year we, that was near and dear to the board's heart in terms of. The federal poverty level increase to help those that fall in the gap. Between making too much but being unable to afford to qualify for federal assistance. We believe that we can work on those issues, for example, with the Wild, Wildfire Coalition, which is the Coalition of. Community Action Organizations. So we're, we're identifying ways and refining our approaches so that we can be. Better advocates for you and your agenda at the state and federal level.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate that. So, and I know we need to move on, so. Um, any other concluding remarks or otherwise? I think you've gotten your marching orders.
Yes, thank you so much, Board and Madam Chair and County Manager for your support and. Look forward to, to delivering on this in October. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, uh, we had a couple of items that we did not get to earlier. Uh, we are on, um. Fifty-seven, the board planning calendar, and I don't know if we have to go into a whole lot on it. I know there's a major change. That we talked about, so I think we should definitely go into that. And just. One other comment, and that is I am going to be in town on August twenty-ninth. And that change hasn't been made, so uh, I am not, it says I'll not be in attendance. I will be there on the twenty-ninth. It is the twenty-sixth that I won't be in attendance, so just FYI. So, um, Steve, I'm going to turn this over to you and.
Yep.
I want to just underscore, um, um.
Yeah, we're just going to cover uh, August very quickly. Uh, because we've got some changes, so what's being projected. On the eighth, um, that is still even in flux. And so you see, we started at ten AM, the action items, consent and action items. We also have. Uh, the item of the Chair Vice Chair uh, change. Uh, is on the agenda for that day. We have a possible exec session and then also in the evening, we have the short-term rental ordinance. And on the eighth, there's some things happen with congressional visit and some other things happening. And so that is going to be in flux until we get a little further closer down the road. But again, uh, please be aware that the eighth is very tentative right now with regard to the afternoon, I believe. Is that? Is that my understanding? All right. Um, then on the eighteenth.
If, if you can just on the eighth, just to underscore, the six o'clock for the public hearing on short-term rental is a. That is a go, and that has been, um. Uh, advertised, and we want to continue to get the word out through our social media and other. Uh, so, sources because we would like to invite our community to basically be part. Of that six o'clock uh, uh, public hearing on short-term rental ordinance. So, thanks.
There's uh, no change on that. That is a certain. Uh, item. So again, uh, we're, we're working with communications and community development. Getting additional notifications out to the public. Regarding the short-term rental ordinance that's on the agenda today, but the afternoon, I think there may be some. Possible changes based on congressional, uh, um, visitor, so. You can see on the notes there, um, looking to move this exec session to a different date. Uh, or to a start time close to five thirty, then the afternoon is in flux at this time. Um, let's jump down to the eighteenth. We do have tax rate adoption. Uh, we're working with the Treasurer's Office, the Finance Department. In teaming up, uh, the tax rates and that'll be happening on Friday. It's a special meeting. Of, of the board only to adopt tax rates, uh, and then after that. Uh, we may have the possible exec session on that tax case that's pending. We reached out to outside counsel to see if we can make a change on that from the, uh. From the eighth to the eighteenth, and so those are in flux. On that day of the eighteenth, also we'll be, uh, having individual meetings. Uh, with the Communications Director candidate, we're working with each of your offices to put some time for individual meetings. This will be one-on-one meetings. Uh, with the candidates, since the communications, uh, you know, staff works so closely with each of your offices. We're setting up time for each of you to have one-on-one discussions with candidates. The twenty-second, there's a lot of happening on the twenty-second.
Question on that. One of the things, this is a second interview, is that correct?
Yeah, for some, but not everybody. Does not everyone have the opportunity?
And we were talking about getting some, um, documents.
Yes, all that's going to be provided to you.
Dynamite. Thank you.
Uh, the twenty-second, this is a special day. We will be coming back into session in the building. Uh, for some time now, the, the boardroom downstairs has been undergoing, uh, some renovation. Uh, with regard to the dais, and so we have stretched out the dais. We've removed some seating. Uh, the board members are going to have more work surface at, you know, at their work surface downstairs. Be spread out a little bit more, so we're not so crammed up. Uh, the staff, uh, myself, deputy managers and the county attorney. Will be located down in the well, and so we're doing a pretty, uh, important reconfiguration. Other important work that's going on downstairs is we're recabling all the technology and we'll note that. Last time we did use the room, we did, we had some significant audiovisual challenges, and so. We are re, uh, recabling and re outfitting the room with technology. But again, this is going to be the first time in a number of months that the board. Will be coming together and, and resuming. Pre-COVID meeting protocol. And so pre-COVID, uh, meeting pro- protocol was that board members. Uh, would be attending meetings, uh, in person. Uh, for the most part, um, and then we'll be looking at key staff, of course. Uh, myself and deputy managers, county attorney that will be in, in the room, present at meetings. Uh, presenters, those individual and, uh, groups and, and staff and elected officials that are presenting action items, they will be physically present downstairs. Uh, departments that, that have items on the consent calendar will be joining remotely. Uh, this also provides the opportunity for members of the public not only to be downstairs and in the room with us while we do your deliberations. But also to join, uh, the board meetings, uh, remotely. Uh, we'll be using a hybrid approach, provides the opportunity for more individuals. Uh, with that, with, um, with other travel time to be able to join the meetings remotely. So again. We're working with your, with your district directors and you to schedule some times so that we can go over in more detail. Uh, some of the, uh, um, details with regard to us coming back together. In, in, in session downstairs. And so that is something to look forward to. Uh, the evening, uh, you can see here, we have items on consent. Proclamations, uh, several proclamations. Uh, we are going to be presenting, uh, the dark sky lighting ordinance. Uh, from community development. Uh, also, the elections department is going to be presenting a work session, information on elections preparation. For the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four election cycles. Uh, we have an update, a program update from the flood control district and roundtable. So again, that's occurring on the twenty-second. Any questions on that?
Questions, members of the board?
Uh, and then on down to the twenty-nine.
Yeah, one of the things, I, I just real quick on the twenty-second, I think we also want to do will be our, um, hopefully the. A new chair, uh, will take over, uh, uh, as of this meeting and hopefully we can do a little passing of the gavel. So maybe it just a little, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, whether. Do it at ten or if we start the meeting at nine thirty, I think that'd be really nice.
We'll put that at the beginning of the calendar. Great. And then on the twenty-ninth, uh, we don't have mu- many items on the calendar yet. Uh, we're, we're, it's actually another special session if needed. This is the weekend prior to the Labor Day weekend, and so, uh, we're looking at possibly adding items. Because we may not, and this is a may, capital M-A-Y, may not have a meeting on our usual time. The first meeting in September, uh, with that, we would be coming back in, on September twelfth. So again, the twenty-ninth is. Is probably going to happen so that we don't have to have a meeting right after the holiday, but we will do whatever we need to do because I know that the. Business of the county is important. So again, just for the planning purposes. And I think I'm just going to stop there. That's, that's the August agenda. Uh, if you have any questions, we can go back to that, but that is the planning calendar at this point in time.
All right, any questions or comments, members of the board? The only comment I am, I'm going to make is I'm very glad that we are going to be able to get our boardroom. Um, available for, uh, public meetings. I think it's important to get back. Uh, to our public, uh, we have public meetings, but actually in-person public meetings. And, uh, I'm very much looking forward to that and an opportunity to be able to invite our public to appear in person. And, you know, I am, uh, certainly, uh, in, encouraging strongly. Uh, asking, uh, for our, our board members to the extent that you can and primarily. Uh, will be at our board meetings in person for our scheduled regular board meetings. So, um, I, I do think it's. Important that we get back into business as usual, business pre-COVID to the extent we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, item. Fifty-eight, man, I might get over a couple of items with regard to the planning, or my, just some notes from the manager's office. So I do want to announce, uh, several personnel changes. Um, unfortunately, we are going to be losing Chris Pasters, who has been, uh, the Economic Development Manager for the county for several years now. He was actually. Our first economic development manager here at Kokea County. Uh, Chris has accepted a similar job, uh, with, uh, um. Economic Development, uh, organization that serves Apache and Navo County. So it's, uh, we'll be next door, and so we'll still be running in, in the same circles for the most part, but. We do want to wish Chris Pasters so much, uh, best wishes going forward. He's been a great, uh, asset to the county, has been a great contributor to our economic development efforts. And we will miss him quite a bit. Uh, we're in the process of working with our recruiter, uh, to, uh, scope the position. And we'll be looking at an external or basically internal, external recruitment for the position, uh. And it's a very important, uh, part of the county. Uh, and so again, we will be having a, a farewell. Um, event for, for Chris, uh, closer to his last day, which will be August eleventh. So we send Chris off with all of our, with our dedication and our, our appreciation, rather. So that's, that's unfortunate. Um, other com- uh, changes. I do want to announce that, uh, we have taken the interim title off of. Uh, Gregory Nelson's, uh, Government Affairs Director title. And so, uh, Gregory. Uh, has held the position in an interim role for several months now. Uh, he's been given the opportunity to test drive the position. At the same time. Uh, we've all kind of tested him as well, and, and, and so he has proven himself. Uh, very capable to, 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 uh, lead. The government affairs effort here at the county, and so we want to appreciate. And, uh, and, and make it known that Gregory is now. Uh, the Government Affairs Director without the word interim. Uh, and then with that, uh, Keith Burkus, uh, will also be. Um, his position is going to be, uh, re-classified, re-classified from analyst. To Government Affairs Manager. So again, those two, as we kind of refer to as thunder and lightning. Will be, uh, working, continuing to work in the government affairs arena. So appreciation to both of those. Also wanted to say that we are reclassing Corey Ringenberg. Corey's position has been Special Assistant in the County Manager's Office. And he's going to be, uh, now, uh, the Special Initiatives Director. Uh, for the county. And the Special Initiatives Director position is very, uh, important to us. Individuals who've held the position. Lucinda Andriani has held the position in the past. Uh, Kim Musselman has held the position in the past. And Corey has been, uh, very key to many projects, namely, just to name a few, uh, Criminal Justice Training Council. He staffed, uh, that effort, uh, as soon as he arrived here from the courts. And he did a great job in managing, uh, CJCC. He also manages the call center during emergency events that we have. Uh, he was also very, uh, capable in helping manage the jail district election. Uh, that, that took place, uh, that extended the life of the jail district tax. Uh, he's now, um, helping manage the library district and a number of other, uh, initiatives. One being, and you'll be getting a, a demo on it, is a new, uh, package, software package that we're rolling out. Uh, that provides the opportunity for residents to. Uh, provide input to us. It's all, it's, I, I forget the name, but it's a very good constituent management, uh, tool. That we're rolling out, uh, internally and externally with the organization. So again, uh, Corey's done a lot of great things. To help out in that area. And so he will be taking on special initiatives. And so those are a lot of things. We have a lot of projects that we want to work on that we don't always have the time to. And, uh, Corey will be getting, hitting that area up. And then finally, uh, Jen Hammond. So Jen Hammond. Is, uh, accepted a shared position. He will, uh, she will be helping us out at the manager's office. Serving as the Executive Operations Manager, but also continuing to staff, um, Supervisor Matt Ryan. Which is shared position, and there's a lot that goes in each of those positions. And we're going to, uh, uh, we appreciate Jen for helping us out. And also appreciation to Supervisor, uh, Ryan, uh, for letting us share the position. Uh, with, with, uh, Jen's time. So those are the, uh, those are the changes that are happening in the personnel area. And then I, just finally for me, uh, I'm going to be on vacation starting on, uh, August. Fourth, uh, through the sixteenth, and Andy Bertelson will be the county, Acting County Manager in that time. So again, those are some of the notes from our office and pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, well, thank you. Well, that's a lot. That's a lot of change. And, uh, you know, I, uh, want to just, uh, extend my deepest, uh. Um. Uh, thanks to Chris Pasters for the work that he has done here in Kokea County. Uh, and for good work on building up economic development, uh, and I, um. Wish him well in his future endeavors and will miss him. And as for thunder and lightning, uh, you know. Those two continue to rocket. They, uh, did a fabulous job, uh, at, for us and staffing us at NACO. And, uh, they continue to do an excellent job of keeping, uh, the board of supervisors informed of what's going on with the state. At federal le- level and to help us, uh, carry our mission. And our proposals, uh, forward on both the state and federal level. So. Uh, I think, uh, promotion for both of them is well deserved. Uh, and, um, I'm very happy for them. And, uh, also the, uh, promotion, uh, for Corey. And, uh, Corey, I know those are, uh, lots going to be coming forward. We've got a lot of. Discussion and things to talk about, and we look forward for your assistance and guidance and help. And, uh, Jen Hammond has always been, uh, an incredible, uh, help. Uh, for, yeah, all of us within the Board of Supervisors and County Managers Office. And I'm pleased to hear that she's helping on a more formal level with you on the County Manager's Office. So. Um, now, we're all here to help Jen, and, uh, I know our district directors are all here to help Jen as well as. She assumes two roles and, um, um, that, that's great. I know that's going to be very helpful for you, Steve. So, uh, and I think, I think I've mentioned everybody. Uh, uh, the changes that are going on. So thanks for that update. Other comments, members of the board?
Yes, yes.
Uh, hello. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I just want to say, uh, first off, we're going to miss Chris Pastres. He, he did a great. Great work. Uh, in the time that I've been on the board, I've really appreciated, uh, how he's helped develop a. Focus on economic development in our county and, uh, especially in the rural areas. And so. It's, uh, we're going to miss him, but we wish him well moving forward. Um, and then I wanted to say thank you to Keith and Greg because every time that we've needed to, uh, be staffed at NACO or. A hearing or, uh, do, do, uh, testify. They, they help, uh, with the notes on, on, you know, the bullets that we need to address. So I really appreciate their work and. I agree, their, their promotions are well deserved. And then, uh, with Corey, I'm excited for him. It adds another, another hat, you know, it's a. And a bigger role, but it's exciting and, and I look forward to working with them moving forward. And same with Jen. Now, those are exciting, uh, moves. And so I look forward to working with them moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Other comments, questions, members of the board? All right.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor, begin.
I'm slow. I put, I'm muting myself. I also want to say thank you to, um, the staffers that went with us, and they were very, very helpful out there and. They got us to where we needed to be and that's where we were. So, but anyway, and Jen, I have a lot of confidence in her, you know, and undertaking. Um, half and half positions, if she's that, if that's what's going to be the case. And then, of course, you know, we're going to really miss, um, Chris. Um. I think he, uh, was a great, great asset to the, um. Uh, organization here, and he is truly going to be missed. And, um, I wish there was something we could do to have him stay. But, you know, times people make decisions to go and, um, to explore other opportunities or, you know, could, um. Things like that. So I just want to say thank you to. And then Corey too, you know, I think that he, he, he deserves to, you know, be, uh, also in a capacity that he's, you know. Going to be very helpful to the organization. So. Going to be very helpful to the organization. So all these, all these um promotions and stuff like that. I I I I support that. And I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you do and uh continue that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagey. Uh Supervisor Fowler.
Yes. So, um, yeah, the management at management level, the um changes are happening. How are the departments doing? Are we doing better at hiring the um staff that? We were um during, we were having challenges in hiring um positions and I'm hoping that with the. With the summer months coming in and maybe the season has changed and we're able to fill more positions. Where are we with that?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Fowler, I don't have exact numbers, but we have. Uh, filled quite a few positions. Our turnover is is down. I know that in the Sheriff's Office, uh, we've been been able to fill deputy positions, which has been very important to us. And so. Uh, we are looking good with regard to 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 uh this team members. Uh, in a number of different areas. Um, you know, we continue to have some challenges with recruiting outside of. Outside of Coquenino County and and as everyone is experiencing. The high cost of living, particularly housing, uh is putting some challenges up for what freshman we do external improvements outside of. Outside of Flagstaff, but overall uh compensation changes that the board has provided. Uh, has uh has helped us in terms of retention, but also on the improvement. So. I'll have Erica put together some numbers, but we do uh looking better in in the recruitment area retention as well.
Oh, that's good, and I hope that holds the same for the IT department. So.
You know, I'll get some numbers on that. I think we've been to fill some of the positions, but uh IT is a general area. We talked about. Accountants earlier, our our uh pipelines that that have been hard to uh. Hard to track through, but we'll, I'll get some information on those areas.
Well, uh, thank you, and I. I hope we are able to hire someone. At the same skill and or higher with what Chris had has. Um, Chris, thank you so much. I work with you very closely. I'm gonna really, really miss you. Work with you locally and um at the national level. We've learned a lot that um. We're bring able to bring in a hundred thousand for the. Um, dashboard that we now use and can be used by anyone. Um, and at such a great asset to our county. Uh, and just the knowledge and the vast knowledge and the ability to bring people together. And to um, just really create something out of um almost nothing that's there. I just absolutely appreciate your work. I'm gonna really miss you. Um, not just me, but the the just across the board. Um, you've worked very closely with the business community. Um, and uh just not just in our county, but throughout the state. Got Coquenino County, you know, when the board made a decision to hire the Economic Development. Um, manager, we wondered what that position was going to be and how was that going to work. And you created an office and created that position and. Um, made it nationwide known nationwide. Um, and I just, I'm just so um. So, we, Coquenino County, just really appreciate your work. Um, Coquenino County is known across the country for the work that we're doing. As a result of your your work. So I just want to thank you. Just really, really appreciate you and hopefully I it's going to be very hard position to to feel. Um, same shoes. Um, but hopefully be someone just as charismatic and such caring. And so knowledgeable as you. Thank you. Um, I really appreciate our staff. Um, Gregory and Keith are just absolute top notch. Um, just really appreciate them. And of course, Corey as well, we're working on a. Putting our taxes together again and trying to do, you know, these are really all of the work that we do. At Coquenino County and all the work that the staff do. Is in the name of our citizens, our name of our residents. Um, and just really appreciate everyone across the board and really happy that we have a deputy. In Tubus City, thank you Sheriff, and I know you've been so committed to um filling that position and. And you were able to do it and just really appreciate you share for. For doing that and it's just not just us, but it really helps across the board and. Law enforcement first responders. So, thank you so much. Appreciate your report, um, County Manager and. Your decisions on the decisions that you've made. Thank you.
Madam Chair, back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I think we're moving on. Um, I know it's been um. Seems like it's been a long board meeting and um. I think anything else you have on community, regional and our administrative matters, County Manager?
No, that should be it, Madam Chair.
If if not, we do have round, excuse me, round table, and we haven't done this for a while. So I'm assuming the board wants to go forward. Um, and you know, I know there has been a lot, uh, and I think it would be if we can. Uh, go ahead and obviously hit the highlights. There's no way we're going to be able to go through everything we've done all month. And and if we tried, I'm afraid we're going to be here until tomorrow. So uh, if if we can kind of try to keep it about uh. You know, three, four minutes, um, supervisor might be kind of nice and uh. We'll be able to call it a a a board meeting here and uh get out here quickly. So with that. I am going to turn this to District Number Two, Vice Chair, Rana Movasquez.
Thank you. Why did I know that was coming? Thank you, man. Uh, so I would like to just really quickly. Uh, reiterate, was mentioned earlier, I did provide public comments for the State Transportation Board. Uh, for the Co- Coquenino County AZ Smart Fund, three point seven million dollar. Uh, to fund uh highway drainage improvements along and beneath eighty-nine. Uh, over over by a government tank in particular. Uh, and so the as well as some improvements to Copeland Detention Facility. The State Transportation Board unanimously approved and uh so we. The three point seven million match award, which is a twenty percent match to the eighteen million dollar federal protect grant that the county is applying for. So um, the other one that's really big on the on the flooding aspect and it's been mentioned before, but I think it needs to be re re uh. We were able to get, uh, we were able to first have uh flood quarter means with the community and we're able to get uh. The ROI's right of of um, not right of entry, it's not now, right? What's ROI stand for again?
It's right of entry. You were right, you're right.
It is right of entry. Okay, I'm sorry. I got a different uh. So the right of entry into um into the Copeland uh flood corridor, which means that we can advance on our engineering. So that's really exciting because uh we still don't have the right of ways to actually build. But at least now we'll have a better idea of what the engineering will look like on 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 the individual uh properties that it goes through. Uh, to to channel the funding. So that that's a huge win. Uh, we've been working with the community. Uh, the Flood Control District has been working with the community to to acquire that that permission so that we can get that engineering done. So. Really excited, especially considering we're seeing the difference between having flood mitigation. And not having flood mitigation in the different corridors. And so it's really crucial that we get this Copeland flood corridor. Uh, engineering in so we can get that flood mitigation. I had the opportunity to attend the Naleo National Association of Latino Elected Officials Conference. Uh, in New York City, it was uh lots of topics around immigration, COVID pandemic impact on communities. Uh, and also about uh the housing crisis, workforce development and infrastructure. Uh, there were some pretty big speakers. Uh, the President spoke via video, uh, Health and Human Services. Javier Barcera, U S Secretary of Homeland Security, Alejandro Mayorkas, uh, SBA Administrator Isabella Guzman. Uh, and the New York Governor Kathy Hoch and the Mayor of New York also spoke. And so it was it was a really uh. Interesting conference, had an opportunity to network and then uh got to uh the next week. Attend uh NACO in Austin with my colleagues, which was uh a great conference and I attended sessions on the transportation policy. As I said, I have applied to be on the Transportation Committee. Uh, and sessions on affordable housing and immigration reform. And then I had the opportunity to meet with the National Association of Hispanic County Officials. And so. It was a good networking opportunity, but it was also an opportunity to attend some of these national sessions and see best practices. And to really see and notice uh just how well. Uh, in particular on resilient counties and with uh the flood and fire mitigation efforts that we've been doing. Just how much ahead of the curve we are, you know, in in terms of what we're dealing with and how we implement. Compared to some of the other counties that that we listen to uh there and how they're dealing with issues. So it was really nice to hear that. You know, we're we're on that on the cutting edge and we're doing what we need to do for for our uh our county. Um, we also, I also got the opportunity to eco-flight and see the Grand Canyon. And and where the proposed national monument for the Grand Canyon is being proposed. And then. Uh, the next day actually presented uh uh with uh public testimony to support the Grand Canyon National Monument. Uh, I butchered the the name, so that's why I don't even try. Grand Canyon National Monument is a project that's being pushed by the tribes themselves, the President, to this Antiquities Act. And so um there was uh, the federal government did have a a hearing in Flagstaff, uh, which was a pretty big deal considering. Uh, how quickly this was only proposed in April. And they came out and did a listening session. There were over three hundred people. Several of my colleagues also uh testified in in support. And so. It was a good, uh, it was a good meeting and it was a good opportunity to show solidarity with the tribes in our area and. Just how sacred uh the Grand Canyon is and why we need to protect it from um uranium mining. Uh, let's see, I'm trying to go quick now. The other ones that, I think the other one that I'd really like to highlight would be the um. One of the sirens tests, we talked about that, but we did get a full Navajo uh translation of the emergency system put in and it was. But there was participation. Uh, we did get feedback from the community and so we're adjusting. On the volume and 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 the clarity of it, but it was good to to be able to test the siren with Navajo in the. Uh, and there were several community members that are happy with with that that change. The other thing that I really that um. That I had the opportunity to do is to go with Catholic charities to tour one of their reentry homes. And uh see the house that provides safe, affordable and temporary housing to people who have had justice involvement. And uh this was part of the meetings I've been doing with stakeholders around uh affordable housing and just seeing how we can support. And then the final one that that was really cool, and I don't know if we mentioned it at the last meeting, so I'll just bring it up again, was the NACO Fellowship Tour. The Federal Fellowship Tour. Uh, I had the opportunity to go to Yavapai County. And tour with them some of the issues around uh off-road vehicles uh and how it impacts uh. Federal lands and then and then came up here and we had the opportunity to talk about flood mitigation. And these were staffers to high-level uh congressmen and and folks from Washington. And so it was an opportunity to teach them about the realities of what we deal with here at Coquenino County. And so. Um, those are the big ones. I have a couple more, but uh we did ask to keep it short. So. Um, I just uh, once they've been busy, uh, July is supposed to be our month off, but it really wasn't, you know, with these conferences. But uh it's good stuff happening and and uh moving forward. Uh, look forward to completing some of these projects and tell more about them. Uh, oh, just want to put a shout out, uh, August twelfth, there's a tariada for Nuestros Reyes, our our Lady Walupe. Uh, from twelve to seven. So uh, we we will be participating in that and just wanted to put that out there for the community. Uh, uh, to please support uh these these different cultural festivals in our community. It's really important. Nuestros Reyes is of are the pioneer Hispanic families from Flagstaff. And uh they're they uh they have been and doing this event annually. And as a county, we've been helping sponsor parts of it and we really want to push and promote uh these these kind of events for our community. So. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair, and uh we have District uh Four Supervisor Judy Bagey.
Done um some activities and I just feel that um uh some of what Hirammo alluded to, you know, I I. Was kind of involved and so sort of some of those. But um I attended the Ashford Day and Florida Media Creator and Law Observatory, and I did the uh proclamation presentations. A lot of good turnout, a lot of positive comments, and um they were happy that we know we were, someone was there in person to do. Uh, the presentations on behalf of Coquenino County. And um also um. Um, the um, I attended a Navajo Nation Chapter ARPA meeting. Um, this is where um a lot of families would be able to get help on the reservation with their done um. Their um sewer system, water lines and uh also their um their their electricity. So. Uh, was an all-day meeting. I did attend a new employee orientation that was um. Done for the staff and uh just basically welcome aboard and think and thanking them for. Uh, you know, showing interest and uh doing some work for us here. And then on, I attended the Veterans Stand Down at uh Twin Arrows, um George Willie's Stand Down and a lot of turnout. Uh, we had set up um um a ta- a booth there and we we put um. Uh, handed out some information regarding uh the Coquenino County, you know, what our services are and stuff like that. So. It was uh a a lot, there were a lot of people there. Uh, I had a chance to get uh get involved in the interviews for the Communications Director. Um, and 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 um, we did uh one, two, really three, three, three interviews that um that day. Um, then also for Slayton Ranch Road, uh, we had a meeting um on the street and so and. Over at the site where the 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 bus kind of sank into that um um land. Um, bridge. So that road has been um. We were, people were asking, you know, how long is it going to take to get it finished and stuff like that. So. Had a chance to meet there with them and then also uh that road has been completed. And it's really nice now, you know, so I I invite others to go uh take a drive out there, but they did a very good job, the contractors. So. And then um also met with Rose Tohe and Ms. Contreras, you know, regarding the appointments today and um interviewed and. Did the appointments today. So I'm just want to thank the board for co- confirming those um. Those two for us today. Also attended a Western Navajo Agency Council meeting, which consists of eighteen chapters and. I believe there's um uh. We out of the eighteen chapters, we have seven and uh six and then Lena has probably six or seven too. So uh gave out a report over there. Um, we did a Mormon Lake Community Meeting, attended that community meeting, basically just um. Um, giving them information about the county and just uh kind of talking about some of the issues with people that were there, you know, that live in the community. So. It was uh something that I really enjoyed um doing. So um, of course, you know, for um. Uh, we met with Orlando Teller and also uh visit um. In um regarding uh transportation um. And then other BIA uh uh Coquenino uh staff and then also board some board, uh Lena and I. And then also we had other people in attendance there. So basically going over, you know. Um, some of the issues that, you know, we're we're talking about within the Coquenino County and on tribal lands too. So. With that, you know, I um, I think, you know, there's um. The testing of the siren system enhancements. I I didn't not uh attend that. There was a conflict. In uh in scheduling, so I did not go there. And of course, we're constantly telling people there should be. We have a fire restriction restriction. There's going to be no campfires, charcoal or woodstoves, except in designated um areas. And smoking is prohibited and always be safe out there and don't go into forests alone and things like that. So. That that's that's also uh been, we've been telling people that. And then the flood mitigation, um, information is still being shared with the with the people that live in the area. Um, you know, to we'll look out for heavy equipment and then making sure that the, you know, the uh traffic. Um, you don't speed in that area or whatever, you know, slow down in traffic and give yourself uh extra time in traveling. So, and then I've been sharing information um uh to some of the um. Um, areas um about a lot of things, which is uh the SpaceX uh Starlink Mobile Unit. Uh, for students and uh Flagstaff uh public schools, of course, um. Of course, when the redistricting is going to be effective and then also just basically proposed a move, location for the new hospital and things like that. So it's been, for the month of July, I attended the Maple Conference in Austin, Texas. And very informed of long days, we had long hours and basically we were just going, going, going. So the last day, I pretty much just dedicated myself to like the exhibits and stuff like that. There were a lot of exhibits there. So and other stuff and of course, you know, getting ready to leave next morning. So but for July, I pretty much took a little time off myself because, you know, for the past three years, I really didn't get a chance to do that. So this year I did that. So I just want to say thank you for for everyone that's been here at the county, you know, helping us along the way and answering our questions. You know, if we had to convey things to the community and things like that, so there's a lot of information that's being shared. We're still working with our chapter, tribal chapters. And then also, of course, Blue Ridge and also Mount Mormon Lake. And then of course, you know, just getting information out to whoever we can. So thank you so much. That's my report.
Thank you Supervisor Bagay and District Five, Nina Fowler.
I can't remember all the things that I've done.
Well, you don't have to tell every single one, just the highlights.
So, you know, where, from the, from the visit of the federal staff that came through here, well, we had the ELM first, oh my goodness, I even forgot about that. We had a National Counties Association Economic Mobility Leadership Network that visit our county. And they toured for four or five days. And it was, it was just a really amazing tour. Want to, of course, thank the staff that put this together, helped put all this together. Greg, Keith, of course, Chris, Deborah. And then all our partners, county management, we, we just were, it was such a great tour. It was very moving for them in the end. And just really talking about all the issues and how we work to resolve these issues in partnership. And that was, you know, just really good tour, because that was right after WIR that we all attend. Then the DC staff came in and Starlink, we work with Starlink. Want to thank Matt and Helen with our IT Department. Starlink Government Relations, Government Affairs Representative came in and we had a meeting in Tubus City with the communities and able to just talk to them more about Starlink. We brought some of the Starlink students that had received Starlink, brought them in and having a one-on-one conversation with her. And that was really, really good. And of course Helen, Helen was there. And we had a really good meeting there. And then we were able to have, we organized, organized the Northern Arizona Transportation Summit with Secretary, Assistant Secretary Orlando Teller. And of course Greg and Keith really put the whole program together and we had a really good meeting. Then part of the focus was on wait stations. And we touched on it, but it felt like everybody wanted to have a update from everyone. All the different agencies, they wanted to provide their updates. And so we did. We have another meeting coming up and really want to look at trucks moving through Northern Arizona. Where are they coming from? Where are they being checked? There's a wait station in Page, another one just the other side of Canab. And the others just in Northern Arizona, you know, we, we don't have trucks that are being checked. Then there's this resolution that has been sent out to us or a letter, you know, over the trucks that are be weighed, that are overweight, that are traveling, the, you know, the trucks, heavy truck size and weight that are traveling our highways. That's another issue that was brought up at the National Counties that in Austin, Texas. And that's what we're dealing with and that's what these meetings are for. Then we had another meeting within Transportation Systems, you know, like Cope Senior Center, the Assistant Independence, the NAECOG organized this meeting and we're talking about just the updates on that. So that is another transportation meetings that are taking place. We have, of course, our broadband meetings that are continuing. The next one is in-person in Apache County. Apache County wants to host that meeting. And so we can, I can have Deborah sent out the, where those meetings are, but we sent invites out. So, oh, that's on August 16th. Well, no, that's the transportation. We have too many meetings going on. So anyway, those are the meetings that are happening, that are really having, with the more coordination that happens in, with these agencies within our counties across Arizona, you know, they have a better opportunity to write grants together. That is the emphasis from the federal government. When we were, met with the Secretary of Transportation, Orlando Teller Shiyaj, he kept saying, okay, how do we put this into a one grant application? So, you know, that's a big emphasis on all of the grant writing these days. So that, that one is taking place. One of the things that I, and then we're also having meetings on getting, we're getting ready now for the tax season that is coming up. So we're working with our communities to see where the sites may be, the dates of the training that is going to take place. All of that is, it's a huge undertaking that has taken place and that we've done all these years. And want to thank Cory for helping us last, last year, hoping that he'll be able to help us again. And so that's another one that's taking place. So we want to do a, maybe a Zoom presentation on $600, you know. There's this new law that's come out saying that, you know, if you receive $600, then you got to report it. What does that mean and how is that, you know, all of, there's a lot more questions that are coming through. Just like earlier, there was, we were talking about budget and all the new laws that come out. Well, same thing with the taxes, same thing happens. So we've got to, we always have a training on that, get certified and then be able to help our, those that were preparing taxes, be able to help them out. We have, at the national level, one of the interesting presentations that I heard that I talked to Craig Sullivan from the Arizona and he was going to check into it, is it was a presentation from California. Graham, the State Association Director, known him for many years. And one of the supervisors did a presentation on how they were able to address homelessness across the state with all of the counties and then the cities and all the partners. And then be able to introduce legislation at the state level. So I thought that maybe we might be able to do something here, at least look into it, see how that works. So Craig and Graham were going to get together and be able to maybe figure out what does this mean? Is it something that we can do in the state here? So that, that was a really interesting presentation, really looking into that. So that's what we're looking at now. At the National Counties Association, we, all our resolutions were passed. So thanks to everybody. And we're all on different, well, I think, anyway, public lands and mainly in public lands. And then we also received three awards. And then the committees, committee, we all applied for committees. And I don't know what Hiramal or Judy's committees, what they are on. But I am, I continue on my Vice Chair for the RAC Rule Caucus. And then also I'm the Vice Chair for the Economic, for the Economic Development Committee. That cannot, Community Economic and Workforce Development. I'm really happy with those committees and then of course I'm on the Veterans Committee and Co-impact. I still am very much involved in that and anything economic development. Because we are, you know, there's just the impact of NGS to our regions. And of course, we're working on BRAC here, which we are part of at the national level. We're part of that, the team that is, has, that was selected. So I want to really, we're getting more involved in that. And it's really working with the three counties. So we'll be able to still work with Chris and Navajo Nation and APS, that is the team application. And then Four Corners, we have Core Four Corners Economic Development. There, they were also selected for BRAC. And so the, the two organizations we're talking about coming together at some point. So that's what we're working on. And then I, I was also selected, one of the ten at large for the National Counties Association Board of Directors. So I continue on those seats and being Coconino County is just very active at the national level as well as being locally and state. Because, you know, I believe that just our, we're all doing that for our citizens, residents in our region, in our county and then beyond our county where we work with the states that are, you know, we don't work just in Arizona, but also with Utah. Trying to see how we can move, create a better life for people. Then the Grand Canyon National Monument, there are some, some concerns about that. And so we're going to be having a meeting in my district on trying to clarify and understand those concerns better. And then maybe be able to work on some language that will be able to address some of those issues. So there is a lot to be working on and I'm not, I can't remember all the other things working on. So, but anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much Supervisor Fowler. And I'll kind of wrap it up. And yes, it's been a busy July, so much for July being time off. It doesn't exist. I'm going to point that out. So and yes, we did have the NAECO Fellowship just before our July break. And Supervisor Vasquez talked a little bit about it. But it was a wonderful opportunity for the NAECO Fellowship for us here in Coconino County to highlight our, with the Legislative and White House participants that came and looked at Coconino County and to share our experience in working as partners with both the state and the federal government and to really show them how we here in Coconino County have used those federal dollars. And the importance of what happens in Washington absolutely affects what we are able to do and the services we are able to deliver here on a local level. And so with that, we, I think we showed them an excellent time, took them to Lowell Observatory where they got to see where Pluto, our greatest planet, was discovered. And also to take a look at the importance of dark skies. They were able to look out at the Milky Way, which three-quarters of the United States doesn't get to see the Milky Way. And we talked a lot about ARPA and how we've been able to use our ARPA monies for broadband, emergency management, Health and Human Services, mental health, forest restoration, took them out for some of the flood mitigation projects that we've been working on and was highlighted by both Supervisor Vasquez and myself. And we took them out to Babett Ranches, one of the most innovative ranches here in, not just in Arizona, but really across the country and how they are using their ranch lands for renewable energies. And in Babett Ranches, they're in the midst of building the largest wind farm here in Arizona. So it was a great opportunity for us to meet with these, as those that work very closely with the leadership in Congress and also at the White House. NAECO, you've heard, we've all been there, we were, all four of us. Supervisor Ryan wasn't able to attend. And I can tell you, Coconino County has an outsized role on the national level. And you can hear from what Supervisor Fowler said, how active we all are within NAECO. I sit on the WIR Board and the Public Lands Board and has just heard, was just appointed to the Vice Chair of the Outdoor Recreational Subcommittee. And that's because eighty-seven percent of the land here in Coconino County is public lands. And so it is important that we here in Coconino County, all of us on your board, have an outsized role here on a national level. I've been very involved with the Grand Canyon National Monument, the Bajnabjo Ita Kukveni National Monument. Did attend the Eco-Tour with Undersecretary Homer Wilks from the Department of Agriculture. Was able to get in his ear about the importance of protecting and preserving this land around Grand Canyon National Park. Also was able to go to Tucson to meet with the mayor up there in Tucson and also Homer Wilks and the Kaibab District Rangers on how we would, if there is a designation of a national monument, we're certainly hopeful that there is, how that's going to look and how that's going to run in the jurisdiction involved in that. And very, been very happy to participate in several press conferences on behalf of the Grand Canyon Trust and on behalf of Coconino County, your Board of Supervisors, members of the public unanimously passed a resolution in favor of the Grand Canyon National Monument. And we're all doing what we can to make sure this in fact happens. I also was able to attend with our county manager, the Northern Arizona Leadership Academy meeting at the Grand Canyon. It's always great when a Grand Canyon is in your district and you get to go up there as part of what you do for your job. And we're able to talk a lot about ongoing matters, our ongoing matters here in Coconino County. Including talking about the short-term rental, which will be before us, August 8th at 6 o'clock. And we certainly welcome the community to take part in that and to be heard from you on our short-term rental ordinance. Able to talk about the national monument, about forest restoration, flood mitigation and just give members of the Northern Arizona Leadership Team an update on what we're doing here in Coconino County. I was also able to do an elections tour of our warehouse with Essler and he went through in great detail the whole election process. And I'm going to encourage my colleagues, if you haven't done so, to really go through this tour. It was really eye-opening, the checks and double checks and triple checks and quadruple checks and that really happened. So it was, really I would encourage you all to take part in that. It was, I feel very strongly that our elections are secure and that we are holding the right to vote here in Coconino County. I also was able to attend a Chevlon, Chevlon Butte opening of their wind farm and it right now is the largest wind farm and will remain so until, of course, the Babett Wind Farm gets up and running. And then was also able to occasionally attend Movies on the Square. It is summer in Flagstaff and the Coconino County Board of Supervisors is in fact promoting and sponsoring some movies on the square. And on August 12th is Cars, and I don't know if you can see this, but we have little Cars for the Cars movie and it's got a little light on it. So we have some here in District One and I know that Brian has some. So come with us, be there on August 12th. Let's hand out our Coconino County Cars during the movie. And also was able to go on a tour of the Pepsi Amphitheater with the county manager on, with Carrie Dunn, who is our General Manager for the amphitheater and Jake Horne. and Jake, uh, Horan, I think that's how you pronounce his name, who is also in charge of the events. And, uh, you know, we talked about what they're doing, what they would like to see done, and just taking a look at how we can best promote our amphitheater. We happened to be there for the Melissa Etheridge concert, and so got to even meet with Melissa Etheridge. So, that was a thrill, and, uh, I think what we can continue to do at that Pe- Pepsi Amphitheater just gets better and better and more and more every year. So, uh, I'm anxious to keep that up and move, move that forward. And then certainly last but not least, because these are just merely the highlights, on a, I'm ending on a sad note. Um, there was yesterday, because of the storm, we had a lightning strike on a home in Baderville. Uh, and unfortunately, it totally destroyed the home, and it's just an indication, no matter what we do with forest restoration, no matter what we do in terms of, uh, being fire wise and to promote fire safety at homes, there are those occasional things such as a lightning strike coming from above. And, uh, I send my sincere condolences to the family. They did lose their home. Uh, the good news was that no lives were lost, uh, and, um, the husband who was home at the time, uh, homeowner was able to go in and get his dogs out. So, even the dogs were doing well. I visited them this morning and that the dogs seemed fine, and, uh, the, uh, the owners are, are, are certainly dealing with the, um, catastrophe that has occurred to them. So, they have my great and sincere, sincere condolences, and certainly we in Coconino County will do whatever we can to help them rebuild. So, with that, it has been one busy July, and I'm so proud of, um, my colleagues and supervisors, uh, for all the great work they continue to do for the people here in Coconino County and to our staff who, you know, really, uh, they do the hard work, uh, and I certainly appreciate, uh, all that we do, uh, and I think we have, as I said, we have had an outsized role on a national level, but we really rock it here in Coconino County, and occasionally we need to really acknowledge that, and certainly I know our community does. The last three days in the news, uh, in, uh, the, um, um, radio and on the news and on, uh, uh, the local newspaper, uh, they have been so, uh, uh, thankful and quite frankly, very complimentary to the great work that we've done here, all of us on, on flood mitigation. So, great job, Team Coconino. It is one family, and I'm so very, very proud to be part of this. So, that's my wrap-up, and, uh, it's been busy. We've had, we've had a good July, so onward to August. Uh, and I don't know if there's anything else. I think we've done it. County managers, or anything else?
We've done, we've gone through the agenda, Madam Chair and Board Members.
I love that, and it is three thirty, and so unless there are other comments that my colleagues might have, or final com- closing comments, I'm going to close this. I will remind, remind everyone, there is an ongoing discussion on the schedule for the August eighth Board Meeting, but the short-term rental hearing, August eighth, six o'clock is a go at six o'clock, and, and please get the word out on your social media sites. Uh, we really want to hear from members of our community on our ordinance. We're pretty proud of it, we're excited to hear your comments, and excited to move forward on our short-term rental ordinance. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job all.
Thank you, everyone. Good job. Have a good day.